Oh, yeah. I would say like a minute together. Oh, yeah. 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 Well, my face. You're there. It's like they're not. Oh, Rocky.
Yeah. Getting a little.
So like we just went to a hundred. The way it works. So there's. He ran by somebody. Boy, some men like spring. We saw. Great work. There's on the end of the. Yeah, because my daughter did. But if it's a. Oh, yeah, the girl. The universe and. Yeah, watch out. I was. I was. They were. Ten dollars. Actually, you sell. Creating the. New space. On the case. Because they interest the people's house. They were running out suddenly. It's supposed to open up. Twenty thirty. About twenty left. And.
That helps.
Forty.
Right. Okay. So. Because I can't give that to us. Space time.
But I don't know.
Like. Now.
So I don't. Third, what's worse. So.
I don't know. Sounds like. Now. Oh.
Yeah. And so. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's second. I'm the trust. No, everybody had pretty vocal.
Well, before we went across the income. Okay, so there. So maybe I will leave about whatever the fund makes.
Oh, the income. You could get the.
Yeah.
Every. That's probably then.
So.
Oh, see, see, see. See. And that you.
There's going to be.
Yeah, I am.
There. So. Yeah. I see. Those are just a little joke. On the next.
For that.
Yeah. But or whatever. That was.
Amazing. Okay.
You're in charge now. Do whatever you want. So do you do whatever you. Like your own.
So.
I didn't do that anyway. So see how that works.
That's just some good news. That there since we're.
Will your board.
Then why.
I have. Board meeting. We're writing for something. The one when they. Had to pack. Say that one day. I could.
Did you go over personnel?
Or formation on financial.
It's in the personnel. Yes. Is there a convenient time?
They know.
Before they. Yes. Well, there's one retirement in the personnel. I think Laura would speak to. So I guess right after that. You say there are any notable changes in personnel.
So they're giving me.
No.
To figure out things. One month.
Because there is.
Picking one.
Yeah. So you can do the retirement and then transition over to the.
Are we waiting?
Retirement. I'm all.
Yes.
That'll work. All right. Work.
So. When we get to the consent agenda and the personnel. Sean will ask, Nora, are there any things of note? Nora is going to come out and talk about one retiree and then we'll have you come up immediately. Follow that and have those guys come with you and introduce them.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Um. You know. Seven percent.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
No. He. Is still. Hey, buddy. Yeah. Okay. Good.
You're good. Okay. Okay, we will call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the May sixth, twenty twenty four regular board meeting for the Marshawn Community School District. Welcome to those of you joining us here in person. Got a decent crowd for the start. We'll see where we finish.
Just.
Welcome to anybody else who might be tuning in on the live stream or who might be watching this at a later date or time. My chair keeps sitting on the table. Uh, we've got a pink sign up sheet there on the speaker's table for anybody who wants to address the board during public comment time. Uh, please understand that you will be given five minutes to address the board. Iowa law prohibits the discussion of specific employees of the district or their job performance. Also, in accordance with board policy, board members will not respond to comments so that we can comply with open meeting laws. We'll do introductions of the board members here with us this evening. Uh, to my right, we've got Zach Wall, Liz White and Sarah Faltis. To my left, Karina Hernandez and Maria Morales. Uh, seated to my immediate left at the speakers, at the center table, Dr. Theron Schudy, the superintendent of schools. And to my right, Mr. Randy Denham, our board secretary. And I am Sean Hightman. We've also got two of our student board reps here this evening. Uh, Daisy Kovarubius Andrade and Giselle Hernandez Ibarra. Second to last meeting for you guys or the last meeting? Second to last. Okay, you're coming back in two weeks. All right. Okay. With with that stuff out of the way, did I miss any announcements, Randy?
No.
All right. Would you all please join me in reading the mission statement of the Marshawn Community School District? We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And please stand as you're able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are none.
Then is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Faltis Hernandez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ho, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Abby, so some recognitions?
Good evening, everyone. So up first for your recognitions is a donation. To my left, I have Barbara Matea on behalf of First Methodist Church. Uh, will present the district with books with a value of one thousand dollar, one thousand ninety eight dollars. Uh, I believe on behalf of Rogers, correct? Yep. Uh, Rogers Elementary School students in grades preschool, fourth grade. Preschool through fourth grade will get to choose and take a book home for free. Uh, Barbara, if you would like to say a few words.
On behalf of First Methodist Church, uh, thank you for this honor of recognizing us. It's been a privilege working with Val at Rogers. She's a huge help to me to to buy the books and I'm just so happy that we can help and support the kids the way we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So now the next recognition is this is that time of year each year where you recognize our school board at school board recognition month. Um. Liz and Maria being the newest board members could probably attest that what people think they're signing up for sometimes winds up being a little bit different than what they actually are expecting to do. And especially in regards to the time commitment, because everybody sees the two meetings a month that are regularly scheduled. With January and July being the exception where you have one meeting a month, but they don't see necessarily the work sessions, the special board meetings that have to be called. The unfortunate discipline hearings that we have to do in addition to the regular meetings and then all the time that's put in for things like the finance committee, the facilities committee. Um, all the other committees that are essential foundational things that eventually lead to bringing forth the types of things that we bring to the board table. So, um, the other thing that I'm greatly appreciative of is the commitment to your own professional development that happens. We do, you know, we try to orchestrate a little bit like with the book studies and stuff, but, um, going to the ISB conferences, uh, tending period like the summit. Um, participating in the webinars, um, meeting with legislators to help try to figure out how to advocate for the right things being done for kids and those types of things. All of that stuff adds up to a significant commitment, but it's those significant commitments that provide our kids and our staff with the great opportunities that they have here and the great, um, facilities and all of that kind of thing. So on behalf of myself and I know my colleagues and the administrative team and just the district overall, we want to thank you for your continued service for the district. I've got a nice certificate of appreciation for you that you can put with your others or, you know, in your home office or your workplace.
Our wall of fame. Do. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Please get it hard around the farm.
Oh.
And then I thought we would also recognize the three student board representatives who um, enlightened us with their presence most of the time and really appreciate the updates that you give. Um, I knew upfront, particularly with Natalie who served with us last year, that it was going to be challenging here with all the different things that you guys are involved with, particularly with soccer. I did feel really bad that, um, I thought when we agreed to this that there was no soccer match and then all of a sudden soccer. Hopefully they'll be okay, but, um, I've got a nice little plaque for you and for the two seniors, we will hope that this will be on like your graduation party table. And all. But thank you very much. I'm sure Ann is going to love that picture of. All right.
Fun it's been.
Abby wall. Picture what you guys hold.
Been a bundle already. Yeah. It's a little way early. Or you don't want. Oh.
Let's give our student board reps.
Hey, turning to the consent agenda, we've got minutes from the March nineteenth work session from the April fifteenth regular meeting and the special board meeting held on April twenty ninth. Dr. Ryan, any items of note in personnel?
Yes, one retirement. Um, I think she pronounces it Colleen. I can't. I'm sorry, but Ms. Rye, if you could move to the consent, please. I know my voice is just so. That's right. Okay. Ms. Rye, um, she has, um, has worked with the for the food service department for a total of sixteen years. She took this job originally as a retirement job after a successful career as a hairdresser. We thank her for her service and we wish wish her much happiness in her well deserved retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. And we'll have Justin Ball for come forward.
Good evening. I'm here to, uh, introduce you to a couple of new additions to Marshalltown High School. Have Roy Frakes. Uh, Roy will be in the interim assistant principal position next year. He's a eighty eighty one graduate assistant at Southeast Missouri State University. From nineteen eighty one, nineteen ninety five, a classroom teacher, social studies, health at Sykeson Junior High. Nineteen eighty four to nineteen ninety six, he was head varsity baseball coach, um, in junior high football. His administrative experience is follows nineteen ninety six to two thousand, Sykeson Middle School Assistant Principal. Two thousand, two thousand one, Sykeson High School Assistant Principal. Two thousand one, two thousand seven, middle school principal. Two thousand seven to two thousand ten, he was Belmont Iowa High School Principal. Two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, he was South Tama County High School Principal. He's been at, uh, his education was Gofield, Goldfield Iowa Schools, K twelve from nineteen sixty three to nineteen seventy six. Has AA at Ellsworth Junior College in nineteen seventy six to nineteen seventy eight. His BA from Univista College nineteen seventy eight through nineteen eighty. And then MAT at Southeast Missouri State University in nineteen eighty seven. His EDS from Southeast Missouri State University in nineteen ninety six. That is Mr. Frakes interim associate principal for next year. You want to say anything?
Yeah, I want to thanks. Thank everybody for the opportunity to work with next year's administration, teachers and especially the students. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Well, we were fortunate that you fell under our hands a couple of years ago to help provide support at the high school and Sean obviously knew you from working with you for a few years and so, uh, we knew it was a bit of a big ask knowing that you're kind of tinkering with actually retiring, but we were very thrilled that you were willing to help us for another year in in this role. It really makes us feel comfortable, given all the changes that we've got taking place.
And Mr. Campos, Hector Campos, we are suggesting for the AP assistant principal position to fill Mr. Dale's role for next year. And his education is a BFA from the University of Iowa nineteen eighty seven. MFA from the University of Iowa in nineteen ninety two. He was a California K eight teacher credential program at Cal State East Bay in two thousand one. California K twelve Administrative Services Credential Program at Cal State Dominguez Hills in twenty ten. Educational Leadership and Policy Studies, PhD coursework, ABD, University of Iowa from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty one. His experience literacy coach K five at LAUSD from two thousand six to two thousand ten. Assistant Principal at Carpenteria Middle School from two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen. As a research assistant, educational leadership and policy studies at the University of Iowa from twenty fourteen to sixteen. ELL teacher supporting science education right here at Marshalltown High School. Uh, twenty seventeen to the present and he and his family reside right here in Marshalltown. So we are happy to have Mr. Campos and Mr. Campos, I don't know if you want to say anything to the board?
Yes, I'm very honored to be here before you today. I'm also an incredibly happy, uh, parent of a MHS alum and equally proud father of a sophomore at MHS and a husband to an ELL teacher at MHS. Kind of a package deal. I I think of myself as highly vested, um, in the success of all teachers and all students. And, um, I'm looking forward to expanding my work with teachers, my students and the families. And again, I'm incredibly thrilled to be here before you today.
And just for the record, it was not my golf ball that flew into your yard the other day. I was just helping find it. It happens. We're excited to have the two of you joining us and where you got, uh, uh, recommended and approved at the last meeting and tonight we have Hector on the personnel agenda, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a number of interagency agreements and contracts. Um, an authorization and consent as a supplement to the administration and transportation agreements with Interstate Power and Light Company and Wood River Energy. A pick a better snack school agreement form to provide elementary students with nutrition information. Uh, contract with responsive schools to provide responsive classroom services. A memorandum of understanding with Mid Iowa Community Action for the twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six school years for various programming. A contract addendum with embark for interpretation and translation services. A proposal from Child Abuse Prevention Services, uh, for migrant education support program. Wow, one for from June of twenty four and then one to be effective July, August of twenty four. Uh, an affiliation agreement with for clinical experience for nursing nursing students between the University of Iowa and the school district. Contract with Yale University to allow MCSD to participate in a study on the implementation of SEL in the classroom. Contract with the University of, that says South Carolina, but it's actually Southern California on that agreement. It's a contract with University of South, Southern Carol, California, uh, for student teaching experience for twenty four, twenty five. An agreement between Care Solace and the Marshawn Community School District to find regional, local and regional health services for students and families for the twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six school years. And then one, two, three, four change orders for the CTE project. And then, uh, finally, an agreement between Marshawn Community School District and School Administrators of Iowa for one year of administrator mentoring and induction programming. Questions about any of those items? Open enrollments for the current school year, there are six, uh, two in, four out. And then for next year, there are three, uh, two in and one out. In gifts, grants and requests, we have the donation from United, First United Methodist Church for books, a book donation for Rogers and then a donation from Team Hoagland. And then a seven thousand five hundred dollars to Hoagland Elementary School to purchase three goal setter basketball hoops. Randy, anything to note in bills?
There is not.
And the high school would like to dispose of some glassware to the University of Iowa Glass Facility. Questions about any of the items on the consent agenda?
The question I had was on. Um, looks like we have a choir, new choir at Miller. Is that five through eight or is it just seven and eight? Five through eight, so it'll be a little hand too.
I'm sorry.
It'll be out way to hand too.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Wall Faltis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ho, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Nobody's on the pink sheet, so it's you guys. Our our Rogers friends. Well. Kendi is also skipping a soccer game this evening.
She she's had to be late. She'll be late. Okay there. Talk to you guys later about it. I'm Melissa Brummel and I'm serving as interim principal there. This is Kendi Manners, our guidance counselor and Claire Wing, our instructional coach. And I'm just going to get right to it. So in the fall, you saw a lot of this information from Shauna. She presented on our school performance. Yeah, sorry. Um, so in the fall, Shauna presented a lot of this information and we just kind of wanted to review that before we talked about through some stuff with our action plan. So as you can see, this was kind of our current reality going into this school year. And, um, below the state average and so we're definitely, we were definitely working with the state on that. Can you go to the next slide? And so this is kind of how the rating system works. Um, there's looking, uh, they're looking to, um, change this rating system. I don't know if they've officially done that. Okay.
They should be proud of me. I didn't try talking from my chair. Nora. Okay, so the state of Iowa is reconfiguring the formula for these ratings and they have submitted it to the federal government. We haven't received approval for that yet. So the new formula will probably include chronic absenteeism and I think Theron has talked or spoken about that in the past board meetings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And that's really kind of where I wanted to just touch on that as we keep going through this. And this is kind of how we were waited specifically and a huge thing that we were looking to do, um, was just make a lot of growth. The growth in math and in the ELA are weighted pretty high and that was where we could potentially make a lot of growth. And with the new, um, scale, it would be more, um, just transparent with how that scoring worked. So that would, that's something that we're hopefully looking forward to as well to see how that scoring helps. We keep going. So this is just to recap, so during the twenty two, twenty three school year, um, the Department of Ed visited Rogers and they completed their visit. Recommendations were given, um, to develop a plan. And so in the spring of twenty twenty three, the plan was due back to the state where it was approved. So since then, we've been developing action steps that we could take. And then in the fall of this year, a team began to further develop those action steps. So I'm just going to quickly go through some of the steps we've taken with the goals that were set with the state. Um, first thing we really, a goal was to continue to work with our, um, reading curriculum, CKLA and Amplify, and we did a lot of work this year with that. So the whole district receives CKLA training. Um, we did as well and we, um, continued to do coaching surrounding that and we created, um, fidelity checks. Um, yeah, lots of observations and feedback opportunities. Can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Um, we established a tight loose document. Actually, it was with the CKLA curriculum, so that was, um, great tool that we could use to just, um, work to with professional development as long and as well as, um, just creating, walking through with those fidelity checks and that walkthrough data and collecting that. So that was, um, a really good first. We've been doing that throughout the year, um, with the Department of Ed, um, central office staff and, um, even teachers within the building. So that's been a really in insightful experience. Um, we've continued to work, um, to use evidence, evidence based practices. We've continued to work with Lisa Weinmore with our sheltered instruction support, creating teacher surveys with what they know, what they need help with. Um, we're continuing to develop, um, a walkthrough observational tool to spot check and make sure implementation is taking place. And then finally, we have been participating in coaching cycles, um, that included, um, me as well as other people from the district and the AEA. So we've been taking a lot of steps to, um, further our work with the action plan. And our plan is in May, we are going to analyze kind of the data we've collected throughout the year. Um, monitoring through data points to see what our next steps are to just continue to impact student achievement at Rogers. Are there any questions before we move on to the next part?
Well, just add one partner whom you neglected to mention, which is worth mentioning is the area education agency has been instrumental. I mean, it's the first time in my career I've ever seen the DE actually proactively provide, um, help and support. But it's really as it's been in the past, the AA who's probably provided the most significant support and that's the ed services part of, uh, the AA which is being, um, somewhat dismantled with both, uh, funding with forty percent next year going to them, sixty percent coming to us. Then things switching to a pay for service type of model, uh, for for the following year. So when you read about hundreds of people leaving the AA, if there's a part of the AA besides special ed that's of significant help to us, it's the ed services piece.
Yeah, we've worked a lot with them the last few years and I've learned a lot from them, so.
I am going to speak a little bit on professional development and also what we have been working with our school to improve, uh, social, social and. with our school to improve social and emotional learning. We have a big list on this page here of our professional development that we've sought. Some of those things are district wide and a lot of those came with, as Claire had mentioned, with the CKLA coaching and training that included PSYOP, included coaching for special education team. And then other things like responsive classroom, we had our trainer come in. We also did professional development within our building that was presented by me and we also utilized some of our AEA. The school psychologist Emily Higebach and speech pathologist Sarah Moore and Hannah Johnson gave some presentations to our staff also. We had all of our support staff trained in Crisis Prevention Institute, which just helps give them the language that they need to help de-escalate situations in our building. So that was huge for us. And then the last thing that is on that list is teachers spent a day observing other teachers in the building, which is a thing that Claire had kind of mentioned that helped for our teachers to just get some different strategies, new perspectives from the people that they actually work with to and that was really successful. We had a lot of great feedback from that. You can go on to the next one. Okay, and then this is our data that we have been looking at. The main reason that we have placed this in here is just to show kind of where we started at and what we have been doing to try to fill the gaps here. The picture, the screenshot on the right is from our conditions for learning data. You can see that we have different sections. We have relationships, student to student, adult to student, expectations and then physical, emotional safety. We weren't happy with our percentages on this, especially in the realm of safety. And so Melissa will talk a little bit on safety that we've, measures that we've instituted in the school this year. And I'll talk a little bit about our boundaries and expectations and how that relates to student relationships and adult relationships. So that's the day that we're working from and we're gonna explain a lot about what we did to kind of improve on that. And we're hoping to see when the conditions for learning comes out in August, September. That we hope to see big improvements in those areas. The other table is our Sabers data from this year. We weren't able to get fall data, but we have winter and spring data. And I am, I'm encouraged by seeing a drop in our percentage of at-risk students. Some of those students via the interventions that we've put in at the tier one and tier two levels have helped them out. They've kind of gone off of our list and they're back into where we think where we feel like students should be at socially, emotionally and academic and their behaviors as assessed by our teachers. So that's encouraging for me and we hope to continue to bring that percentage of at-risk students down with these interventions. You can go to the next slide. And this is one of the things we have really focused on this year in responsive classroom is our morning meeting components and interactive modeling, where are two. Morning meeting has four different components, greeting, sharing, activity and message. This is to foster that community in, within their classroom. You can see we have some pictures of our students. They're doing some team building activities and then they're also sharing about like their culture. They brought in some different keepsakes at home and talked about them in their classroom. And so just to foster that environment that they are family and that again goes along with the safety measures, feeling safe in their school and feeling like they have good relationships as well. The interactive modeling is another practice that we have been taking on, especially in the area of common area expectations. Students, what we did with this outside of just working interactive modeling in our classrooms is also reteaching using interactive modeling to reteach common area expectations to students who maybe were struggling in our common areas like our lunchroom, recess, hallways, bathroom, those kinds of areas. They were referred and they were able to kind of have a teacher that went over bathroom expectations if they were having issues there. And so we took that head on with our interactive modeling. An awesome initiative that I think was helpful for us in the short run and kind of got those issues out of the way. Okay, I will fly by with our fly five. First year of implementation, tier one is what I teach. Everyone in the elementary schools are teaching that. Classroom teachers and school counselors. The other one, tier two, I'm really excited about this curriculum. We just got this and it is for targeted tier two interventions. And I just take Sabers data combined with teacher referrals, what they're telling me and we can set up different groups based on the CARES standards that was presented on I know a couple school board meetings ago. So that is also another piece of the puzzle as well. And I am done. You go. You're up.
All right. In addition to that, we've put a lot of emphasis on outreach to our families and our kids. Our attendance team has worked hard to motivate kids to come to school, to be excited about coming to school. So Suhei used this visual model there to have some competition between our classrooms. And we've had some classroom parties, some fun dress up days as rewards for our attendance. Next. Here we, through the NIET framework, we've been working on our environment and how to make it relevant to the students. And so we aligned this display case with our SEL work that we've been doing and taking pictures of the students in the school and all of the wonderful things they're doing. And we put it on the display case. Our kindergarten teacher has kind of taken that on as far as changing them out often and the kids enjoy looking, walking by there and seeing their friends and all of the things they're doing. Next. We have Big Brothers, Big Sisters coming. We've got some really good matches there. You can see they love playing the sports with them. And our safety and security team has done a lot of work this year. You can see we got new stairs and railing, new interior door locks. The rocks were removed from the playground in the back and in the front. There was some concrete removed and some grass planted. The rocks were dangerous getting all over the concrete, making a mess and breaking a window at one point. So they have been doing a lot with that. And the other big undertaking was updating the first aid kits in every single classroom because it had been a while since that had been done. Next. Suhei, Ms. Kenner and myself have been on the social media committee working on increasing our following. We've almost doubled our following on social media. I think Suhei is having maybe too much fun with that every day. But she posted a very nice video today for teacher appreciation. I would encourage everybody to go look at that. Next. There's some examples.
She's after that award is.
She's very competitive, we found out. Yeah. Yeah, you can go next. This is just an example of what she's been sharing on there. And another example. Our bingo night, we found out that there had not been a PTA or a PTO at Rogers for quite some time. And so we contacted some parents that have had that up. And so they have had, I think, two events so far that they've done and they have raised some funds to get some things for teacher appreciation. I think they're bringing donuts tomorrow. So it's exciting to have their support and to offer opportunities like this bingo night. There was a nice turnout there. We also had a steam night in October. We had a family night. There's been a couple, quite a few that we've done there. Next slide. And this Thursday, we're having a carnival. You're all invited to come from five to seven. We're gonna have cotton candy and games. So it'll be exciting. Any questions for us?
For that data for the CFL, I know it's twenty twenty-three and you guys haven't received the data, but has there been any like feedback from the children of why they don't feel safe, either emotionally or physically? Or is there like something that they are not checking a box or something?
I know. I was not here to give the, the, the survey last year. A couple of those questions on there, I feel like they might've had a hard time understanding. I'm, I'm kind of guessing at that. There were a couple of questions that I felt like when I read through, I was like, that could be definitely like confusing to a kid. So that could be part of it. But other parts of it, you know, we talked through lots of different things. And just teaching kids skills on how to like resolve conflicts and how maybe what another student said to them wasn't exactly how it was to be portrayed and things like that. So we've been having lots and lots of conversations about it, lots and lots of groups about it. So I could see how some of that could be just part of social skills of growing up and developing things like that. And we have had some, I feel like some issues in the past as far as our physical safety with some of the things that Melissa had mentioned with just at our playground, like the rocks and stuff like that are kind of a safety hazard. So I could see part of that and I can also see soccer can be rough sometimes and Gaga ball can be rough sometimes. So that's part of it. I haven't gotten any like specific feedback as far as what they do or do not remember. I have short-term memory. They also have short-term memory from last year. So that's something I'm really excited to look at for this year, for this coming data to like really dig into that and to ask those same kinds of questions for here.
I would, well, yeah, I was gonna add, one thing we didn't put in here was we have therapists that come twice a week and meet with some of the kids that we have identified that could use that, that support. And so hopefully that will help to improve that too.
How do you feel about your preliminary growth proficiency growth metrics so far this year?
Well, it's raw still, but we've seen some exciting data coming through with some of the on-demand scores with the ISSAS test. So from third to fourth grade. So preliminary raw scores, but we're really, really excited. So.
Okay, so you've seen some positive growth.
Yes, yeah.
In both math and reading?
More so in reading, which we hit really, really hard with the goal this year with the CKLA coaching coming in. That was most of our walkthrough data. And I think some of the math scores might support the recommendation that you might hear about a little bit for some new math curriculum. So.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, Melissa, I mean, you stepped into a kind of a difficult spot. And I appreciate that and from all indications, you've done a really wonderful job over there. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I would say that to all three because Kendy just came and Claire's been there a few years, coming out of the classroom to be instructional coach and particularly with Melissa, I mean, we've had significant turnover in a short period of time and the leadership and there's always change when that happens and coming off COVID. And there's just been a lot of reasons, different factors that I think have created a tougher than usual situation to work through. And Melissa's been a rock star and helping us particularly in terms of the behavior management and trying to get people that are dysregulated, probably I could say students and staff more regulated in that regard. But we do all recognize the unique challenge that you had and appreciate all your efforts this past year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So good evening. We usually don't do two of these on a school night, but I've had some extraordinary personal circumstances this spring and I appreciate Dr. Shute's indulgence and the consideration shown and being able to postpone this and move this, move this to tonight. So to my left is Paula Johnson. She's a special education teacher for Marshalltown Virtual Academy. And she's gonna kick off these first few slides here.
So you may have experienced virtual learning, but the proper definition, right, by some people are is that distance learning, it's virtual learning is distance learning conducted in an online environment. So in, it can be self-paced, asynchronous, or it can be synchronous with live web streaming or Google meets in our case. MVA uses mostly the self-paced, the asynchronous learning for most of our courses. So, okay, there we go. So why, why a virtual academy? Well, beyond the fact that this is the wave of the future, right? We also serve our students in credit recovery as needed, but there's also acceleration for students who want to go beyond what the normal traditional, you know, you can only do these kind of classes that we have many of those students who just want to keep going. The pandemic unfortunately caused a rise in anxiety and depression across many students. So they feel safer when they're at home and working on their computer. So this also follows with non-traditional family schedules where we have some families that don't want to be just in Marshalltown. They want to be on the go. And so this gives a chance for the students to continue their learning, even when they're not within the realm of Marshalltown itself. We also have through many career fields, you know, people, professionals are working in a hybrid situation. So virtual learning also prepares them for, for skills beyond school. And then finally, as things, as we've seen in the last three years, virtual learning technologies just keep growing and growing and growing. So I'm always excited about what's coming next. And so some of our features in the Marshalltown Virtual Academy is that, again, classes are flexible, they're self-paced, depending on the grade level and courses. We focus on personalized learning to the greatest extent possible. So which follows along with our mission statement. Of course, acceleration again. We also have access to college coursework. So, and I can attest to that when my daughter a few years ago was one of those students who went through MVA and graduated with her AA in the same year. So we, that is a big part for some of our students. Students also were currently a seventh through twelfth grade virtual academy, but sometimes they want to go to the high school for electives or in person, or sometimes there's, you know, other classes. They want to take, you know, as many math classes at a, at a certain time versus being in a traditional classroom. So they might have a part-time virtual, which is also an option for them. And one of the greatest things of virtual is students do need that social interaction. So we offer sports, music, speech clubs. All of those things are eligible for our students to do. Whether they're within the Marshalltown area, or we have also students who are across Iowa. So they also have that opportunity to take those clubs and those fine arts through other places as well. So students in virtual are not on their own. There are regular teacher check-ins. There are teacher office hours where students can drop in. Teachers give lots of feedback on assignments and, and different activities that they have to do. There are also ELL supports for English language learners. The XLP students have services and of course, special ed students have services as well. And our seven, twelve learning management system is through Edmentum. So we have over two hundred courses at our disposal for students to take. And which includes everything required, electives, career technical. We have it all and we offer it all proudly.
So as I put this presentation together, we currently have, we are serving one hundred and twenty-five students in MBA. The pie chart shows the, the grade distribution. You can see that middle school is a very small piece of who we serve and we serve mostly secondary nine through twelve students. That's just a breakdown of our grade representation. As of April thirtieth, we had completed four hundred and ninety-one semester classes completed in the system, not including other credits earned outside of the system. So that does not include like their college classes or any of those other kind of classes. earned outside of the system. So that does not include like their college classes or any of those other kind of classes. Uh last year, we graduated sixteen students. Our students do go through commencement at Marshalltown High School if they choose to. This year so far, we have six students who've graduated with many more to come.
Do you have a guess, target guess on how many you project will be completed by the end of the school year?
Uh it should be closer to twenty probably.
Total?
Maybe a few more, yeah. So we're waiting on grades from the college. Um most of the finals have been taken at the college and stuff. So uh we don't, we haven't gotten those grades yet, but we have a couple of students who are only taking MCC classes at this time. They're done with their traditional college coursework. So um so based on the the enrollment and the projections and our experiences and trying to uh support middle school kids in this kind of environment, um we've had internal discussions about making MBA an eight-twelve program in twenty-four, twenty-five and a nine-twelve program in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um that's to um accommodate those kids who are already in MBA. Certainly, as an administrator, my most difficult kids to keep track of and keep motivated are some of our seventh and eighth grade kids. That's been a that's been a struggle and I'll talk about transition here in a little bit when we get to the next slide. So where are our kids from? I think this is kind of an interesting interesting statistic. We serve just over eighty percent of Marshalltown resident kids. Uh four percent of our student body has revoked an open enrollment out to return to the Marshalltown School District and selected MBA. And we do have a significant open enrollment in population of kids selecting MBA um as a, as a choice and they do not live in the school district. Our three biggest out-of-district representations in terms of districts would be GMG, Gladbrook, Reinbeck and Ames. So those are the districts that are the largest um sources of the open enrollment um into the school district. So um one of our big challenges is that um there is high mobility within our student body. So what you will see is on count day, we had, I believe, sixty-four resident students and seven open enrolled in students on count day for seventy-one students total. Um we have added seventy-four students to MBA this year. Um we have dropped transferred or graduates and we've had six grads so far. Uh so drops or transfers have been fourteen. So those are students who, we had a, we've had a a few families move away and chose a different option in, and if they moved out of state, they're, they're done with education in the state of Iowa. Um but we've had some kids who just haven't put in the time or the effort. And so um we'll talk about that when I talk about handbook here in a little bit, but we have poached or cajoled those people back to in-person education. We've been more um vigorous about that this year, I think, than we have in the past. So our current enrollment is a hundred and twenty-five. But forty-two kids have joined, forty-two students have joined MBA since January one. So a third of our student body has been with us less than four months essentially. So there's a lot of mobility and we get a lot of students who experience difficulties in an in-person setting and they're looking for another option or another choice. So here's our FTE breakout in terms of teacher time allocation. Paula is that one point O of special education. You see the other breakouts there as to how what kind of budget resources we are using to serve those one hundred and twenty-five kids.
So Eric, if you were fully staffed this year, would that math position equate to what science, English and social studies?
So I think the math position we could probably go either way on that. We could, we could go three-sevenths or two-sevenths time with that. Um right now, it's um um that position is vacant. We had had we'd had someone in that position, but we don't any longer. So but yeah, we would start probably with that point two eight and and see where, see where it landed. Science has a lot of labs because we do try to facilitate some labs and we have some equipment that we can circulate. Our labs need updating and so there's some work there for a science person to do. English Language Arts, um there is a ton of grading. There is a lot of reading what kids write. The writing component of our English Language Arts classes is pretty significant. So our teachers are giving are reading a lot of things in English Language Arts and providing a lot of written feedback and doing a lot of Google meets. So she's very active. She's also because of Paula's work in special ed, I would say Tammy is probably one of the people you collaborate with most in in MBA. So.
For these fractions of an FTE, are we utilizing those resources somewhere else in the district or are they just part-time employees of the district?
Uh the science and language arts people are part-time employees that are if you think of it like a community college, like adjuncts, I guess. Is a good analogy. Um the rest of those folks are other people where we've picked up bits and pieces of um it's often with a collaboration with the high school where A, we happen to have an extra period of this, we can support this, you know, so we try to share across to to get all the efficiencies we can.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions?
Is the, is that mobility data pretty consistent from year to year that way?
So we have, I have um this year built a relationship with the Mason City Alternative Pro um Virtual Academy. Yes, we are seeing this trend through most virtual academies in Iowa. It's probably a trend that goes beyond Iowa too. They're seeing the same kind of mobility. Um so kids generally come to us from in-person settings where something didn't go well. It would either be academically or peer relationships or relationships with adults. Um something didn't go well. And so we that would account for most of our referrals. We do get a few. We've had a couple of acceleration cases this year. Um we had a young lady here in town who was a junior. She was attending Marshalltown High School. She was doing just fine, but her mom came home after work in Christmas and said, we're moving to North Carolina this summer. You don't wanna change schools. I suggest you get done. And so she, as a junior, then decided to choose MBA and she's got two classes to finish and she's in great shape. She's gonna make it. So we do get cases like that. Um we have an open enrollment in next year from Linville Sully. A young man whose father is retiring. They are touring the country in an RV. And they want to maintain, they're maintaining their Iowa residence, but they want the flexibility for him to have some of those experiences as well. And he's a very strong student. I, from looking at his record, I don't have any doubt he'll, he'll do that. But so it's a very flexible option and it's we had a student, I think, two years ago that I messaged and congratulating him on his graduation and he said, yeah, just so you know, I turned this assignment in from the wifi at a truck stop in Louisiana. So it's, you just get, it's, it's the world isn't like it used to be. And I think this option allows us as an organization, we as an organization to be responsive to the needs of our constituent families. So.
How many students would you guess have been counseled back into either traditional school or?
Um at least a dozen.
And combination middle, high school or?
Probably disproportionately more middle school students than high school students. And there's a few kids that when, when, if they come and they, everybody that gets into virtual has to come meet with me. If that student won't look across the table at me and commit to like engaging virtually, now they can always lie to me, I guess. But if they won't commit to engaging virtually with me, they don't even start. Because that's just not gonna work, you know? We're not a, not a place where you can escape truancy or the consequences of your choices. You know, we do have expectations in the virtual world, just like our and we can't undermine our in-person programs, you know, by just being an easy out for folks. So.
I know that when you, I, Shawna, were looking at the existing programs in the state, I think it's safe to say that um most of the virtual schools that got accredited were nine through twelve. Those that tried to accommodate elementary and or middle during the pandemic. Well, most everybody dropped off the elementary pretty quickly, realizing that that was not working. And then probably one a few that offer it to middle school and the same, for the same reason, it was just much more difficult to engage and to get that age of student, especially if there was any independence that had to be had by the student in doing it. Parents worked and the kids were home alone doing it. It just wasn't working in most cases.
Yeah, so the, the four seventh graders that we have right now are actually all pretty really legitimate. But I would say that their parents are all deeply involved in making sure that they're, they're active. You know, and and they, they replace the classroom teacher in the sense that somebody needs to be there setting those boundaries and those expectations. Most kids aren't gonna find their way there without that kind of support.
How many virtual academies are there around the state? I guess is it, is it, is there a lot? Are we pretty unique?
Eight or ten maybe? There's a few big ones, you know, some of the ones that are backed by corporate partners do a lot of advertising, do a lot of promotion and things like that. Des Moines Virtual Campus, if you watch any of like the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union State Events or the IAHSAA, if you watch like the wrestling finals or something like that. Des Moines Virtual Campus is always advertising on there. But um there are some there are a few operations around the state. And we are kind of like right in the middle of that group as far as size and and we all share pretty common struggles. And we all have pretty similar successes at this point. So.
Up until two thousand twenty, the state of Iowa didn't allow you to offer virtual school. There were only two virtual schools in Iowa. One accommodated I think secondary primarily, and then the other one was like either elementary or K-12. And then um as we were approaching the pandemic, the state then allowed four districts to um seek accreditation in order to be able to offer it. And I wanna say for some reason, I was thinking during the pandemic, there might have been closer to between fifteen and twenty schools, but I don't think all of them are doing it anymore. So I'm not hundred percent sure if it's eight, ten what happened. It's not very many.
I'm hearing about three or four that are probably opening next fall. One in the Cedar Rapids Marion area, I know for sure, but.
You all mentioned that some of these students are um active in extracurricular activities. How often is that communicated with them? Like when soccer's coming up or basketball signups? Like, is that something that they have to look for or is this something that is shared through the?
So they all, I believe, get the MHS announcements available to them in e, they do, yeah, yeah. In email. We also, um if we're doing something like on the college and career readiness side, um we took students to the John Deere Tech Program up in Kelmar um this winter. Um we had MLA and MBA kids go on that trip. So we do make them aware of those opportunities. They don't nibble on them terribly often, but they, they, they are, they are made aware of them. Um we wanna do a better job of doing some of that post-secondary kind of planning with them and stuff. So that's something that we're gonna look to do, do a better job of down the road. devote some more time to that.
The other thing that I find interesting, um and I've talked with Eric about it, is that we're you know, close to four years into this now and there is yet to be an effort to establish a network of these schools in Iowa, which if there were a network of these schools, I think they could really learn and grow. Thankfully, you know, Eric reaches out to Mason City and a few others that he knows, but um I find that interesting and I would hope that especially if we get some more districts coming on, then in some way, shape or form, that would happen. So that at least those that are administrating or overseeing those programs could have some conversations in terms of what's working, what's not working. So everybody can kind of benefit from that.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. One of you gets to leave.
Just quick and all. Yeah, so the uh, thank you. Um here to talk about handbook changes. Um there are relatively few handbook changes. Um known personnel changes and Board of Education changes have been updated. Um I did add a line on the uh visitor policy where it says we may at some point in the future, reserve the right to do instant background checks on visitors. If we ever get the software to do that, we will, I'm just letting people know that we may do that. Um due to the district's website updates, all of my hyperlinks in here were wrong, where I had like reference policies and stuff like that. So I've gone through and updated all those and the new ones. And I have done some strikeouts and strike-throughs. Um the other really minor change that I added under the health portion on page fourteen was I added under eighteen to no student will be sent home ill or injured without notification of parent or guardian. We have students who are their own adult and are kind of estranged from their parents or
Emancipated or?
They have emancipated themselves, which at age eighteen, they can. And they don't want their parent or guardian notified. So I just, the issue has come up three or four times this year. So we uh I wanted to include that in the handbook and that's the MLA handbook changes.
Any questions?
On a MLA handbook, I meant to ask some of the other principals with the attendance. Is there potential or law change? Does that affect the handbook at all or?
There, there could be some future adjustments made based on the most recent legislation.
And the force of law would override a handbook anyway. So, yeah. But yeah, we've, I've read some of those potential changes. They're pretty uh um pretty significant.
Typically, what happens with something like that is there'll be probably some board policy changes that you'll see through the policy primer. But the DE will also likely provide some further guidance on the implementation of that, especially since there's no additional funding to support it. Um so we'll probably wait. Um, so we'll probably wait for both of those things to happen before we bring something forward in that regard. So it might be as late as August, quite honestly.
Another question with attendance with the MLA versus the MBA. MB, how do you judge, how, how do you judge attendance? How, how does that work versus the MLA?
So our MBA attendance is um, we are able to, in the backside of our learning management system, see what time a student logged in, what time they logged out, what they engaged in while they were online and in the system, and what they're doing, and then we would have, um, because we're relatively small. I have then knowledge of, okay, who's in college classes? Who's working forty hours a week and getting some work experience credit? Who's um, you know, doing these other things so I can adjust and, and the attendance appropriately? But that's how attendance is done in MBA, it's and MLA is, is like any other school.
How's attendance been this year with MLA, with both of them?
Um, both programs, um, because of the predominance of at-risk kids, really struggle with attendance, the new chronic absenteeism. That becoming part of a school report card is really, um, really concerning, we'll continue to try to work to make that better. So that's it for the MLA handbook. On the MBA handbook, the only change so far is on page fifteen, I delete, deleted the third bullet under the academic integrity piece, which was um, and I'm not sure what the thinking was, and I'm sure I was involved, of how this got in there in the first place. But what I'm deleting is where it says for written assignments. Um, it's dishonest to submit a paper that has already been turned in for another class unless a teacher has given her, his or her permission. Um, we are now doing some cross collaborative kinds of things between English language arts and science and things like that. And with social studies, and I know particularly in psychology. Um, so kids are writing pretty robust works and using them for both subjects, and that's perfectly fine. So I'm taking that statement out. I recommend that statement goes out. I would say the other comment about the handbook is when we talked about, um, to Mr. Wallace's point about attendance. There's a phrase we put in last year where it says, students with unsuccessful, unsuccessful traditional learning experiences may not be admitted to MBA. Or may be admitted to MBA on a four-week trial basis, and that's up near the front of the handbook. And then students who fail to engage or fail to meet attendance and engagement obligations or meet the definition of chronically absent, may be reassigned to in-person. So I would, I would say that language isn't changing, but I would say that um, we have been more vigorous in enforcing that this year than certainly last year. And that's going to be a continued point of emphasis as I meet with every family that joins MBA.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, good evening. It's been a very exciting year when it comes to K through twelve curriculum adoption. And I have two experts sitting next to me, they're the rock stars behind this work, and they've done an excellent job. Uh, we had an extensive list of team members that I know we'll talk about too, um, that were a part of it. And it's just a great week to be acknowledging their work because it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And um, these two are teacher leaders, and I want you to be included with that as well. This work wouldn't have moved forward without you, so I'm very excited to sit here and support the recommendation.
Okay. Thanks, Amy. So just a little bit about our process, um, we had a very large team, given this was a K-12 adoption. About twenty-two regular members, that was comprised of teachers, instructional coaches, administrators. Um, and we were very proud to say we had every grade level and every building was represented in this process. Um, our, we did a lot of learning and research at the beginning, which was focused around our core math standards. And then math research and best practices in math. Um, after that, um, which was a long time, if you ask the teachers. Uh, we were able to narrow down our choices to five curriculum options. We used ed reports to help with that process, to then further narrow it down to three choices to hear from vendors. So we invited three vendors in to come in and give a deeper presentation on their products. And then we asked for some feedback from our committee, um, we, we had a pretty rigorous process. Um, and so from the feedback and the objective evaluations of our materials, we are recommending the adoption of Reveal Math, which is from McGraw-Hill, and that would be for K-12. Uh, the next slide is just going to show you all of our hard work. Um, something that didn't mention in the process is all of this work was done after contract hours. Um, we started with once a month meetings in the fall, and the last couple of months, we went two times a month. So lots and lots of um, work dedicated people on this team for sure. Uh, as we all know, like this is a very important decision to make. And this is just kind of our curriculum adoption roadmap, as you can see. This is um, what we're using, the process we're using for all curriculum adoption in our district now. Um, our curriculum and instruction team has um, worked really hard to kind of put this together. So you'll see this consistency every time we're um, having a curricular adoption, no matter what the uh, content area is. So um, we are at the tail end of phase two, sitting here today, recommending our choice to you. And um, hopefully with your approval, we'll move on to phase three, and you'll see, you know, we're not at phase four. So something really important to point out is we need to move on to that education of all stakeholders. And then that continued professional learning for our teachers, so that we can implement with fidelity.
So um, I, I do want to point out that Jen pointed this out to me. We really don't think we're here to give you a sales pitch, even though that's the title of this document. I changed the title of this document before I uploaded it, and it did not work, so we know that's not what we're here for. Um, so when, we wanted, we felt like it would be important for you to know how we kind of came to our final recommendation as a team. So um, after we did a lot of analysis, um, rating of things according to what we learned in our study, um, we kind of did a final like, okay. But we had two options, how do, how do you feel about this option? How do you feel about this option? And so um, a five means yes, love it, this is awesome, I will go out and do the work needed to make this happen. Um, a three is, it's not my favorite, but I'm absolutely comfortable moving forward, it, it'll be, it'll work for us, it's fine. Um, and below that is, we need to keep talking, um, there's something that's not quite right. Um, with me, with my thinking about this right now. And you can see um, the little pie chart there. Yeah, that's kind of hard to see colorize, but that is not zeros at seventy-five percent, I'm just going to tell you, those are fives.
Right behind you, if you look at the colors.
Good. Um, so you can see the vast majority of the team um, was at a five, we love this, it's great. Um, a few were at three, I, it's maybe not my, I'm, it's not my favorite, but I'm absolutely comfortable, and this is going to meet our needs. Um, and we did have one, one, which we um, discussed as a team, decided to gather more information from the company. It was more about uh, technology integration and how that would work. And when we got the um, information that we were requesting from the company, then all parties were like, yep, that sounds great, let's move forward, that's going to work. So, um, yeah. And then, um, so here's some highlights of the program, just a really quick um, summary of, of why we selected this. So there's a pretty big focus on building a math mindset and um, kind of infusing some SEL like components within that about like problem solving and uh, being okay when you make a mistake and persevering and those kinds of things. Uh, some self-assessment of how you um, how strongly you feel you understand the content that you learned each day. Um, there's a great assessment suite, um, there's formative assessments every day um, that can be done digitally. And then all that feeds into a dashboard, and it gives you information about your class and helps you organize. There's a readiness diagnostic at the beginning of every unit with support for teachers to kind of build the prerequisite skills. If students are showing that they don't have the pre-knowledge they should have to be successful in the unit. Um, there's multiple forms of unit assessments. The, there's a very clear instructional routine that goes K through twelve, um, which we thought was great. Um, there's a balance of direct instruction and students exploring. Clear learning outcomes are embedded, and then um, lots of support for differentiation within every lesson. There's scaffolds embedded, and there's ru, routines for fluency and number sense as well. So lots of positives that teachers are really, really excited about. And our last slide, um, talks about funding, which is super fun. Shawna can elaborate on this part, um, but we have kind of two things going on here. I believe you're already aware that the Department of Ed has committed to supporting this K-12 math adoption. Um, so the vast majority of the funding is going to come from that. And then there may be some like components or a supplementary material or something that supports the work that isn't part of, you know, what the DE considers the core or something that we might ask for purchase from MCSD. But um, the vast majority will come from the Department of Ed, and Shawna might have some more details on that.
We don't have an official number or quote for you, um, but we absolutely will next time. This is more of an open discussion around the resource, and I, I usually do give you kind of a ballpark idea of how much it'll cost. I did talk with the Department of Ed today, and they're working through an RFP process, so I, it's, it's moving along. They definitely said that they can figure something out with us, if we need to do an MOU, I'll come back to you with those details, so we'll, we'll get them to you.
And we have that in writing?
We do have it in writing, yes.
We did the last time.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for us?
Thank you for sharing the process that you're using kind of behind the scenes and all the people that have been involved. That's, it's very nice to see that kind of rigorous process being used, so thank you.
It's, it's a great process.
This has always been, I mean, not that, it might have been further enhanced, given the DE involvement or whatever. But I mean, we've always collaborated with the people that are being asked to deliver the curriculum, to make sure that they're on board with whatever direction we go.
This is the same process I've used ever since I've been in this role, so yeah. We didn't change, really, we didn't change really anything because of the state being involved.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's just really special that it's K through twelve, and it's a core area. Um, if you think about, if it's a six-year adoption and you have a fourth grader, they're not switching curricular resource from that fourth grade seemed to, to fifth grade. And then they don't have to switch from the sixth grade to seventh grade transition, and they don't have to switch from eighth to ninth. So it's really neat to think through like some of that consistency that this decision brings. And um, I think the team always knew that that would have been my preference, but they voted individually, and it was just really neat to see them come together on that decision, I think that was probably the highlight of the whole. Uh, we didn't vote, we, we just kind of had to stay back and watch the results come in, so um, it was the teachers who really made this decision.
I think the states, with the state involvement or offer, it required us from the very beginning to have evidence-based curriculums to, to choose from. So that really was probably the only primary difference that probably narrowed down the original list of options, yeah.
I, we used ed reports before when we did literacy, so yeah, I mean, it, it was actually affirming of our process because we kind of had a lot of this in place, and the things that they said they would have required, we
We looked.
We were going to do, so that worked out great.
And the department did send um, a representative to be a part of the meetings too, which was incredible collaboration. So we can't say enough wonderful things, and they, I called them several times and asked like, what if this happens? Or what if we go this direction, and I know we've talked at our SIAC meetings about this as well, and they were always responsive. So it wasn't, uh, you have to go to these three resources, um, they were always really easy to work with.
When was the last time we updated curriculum? Like, when was the last time that, was it Go Math, right? When did they, when did we roll that out?
Well, it's been like six or seven.
My first year in this role, so we adopted when you were in this role, so is it six? Oh, no, this is seven, because we did it six years, and then we got, so this is year seven.
I was just curious.
Yep.
But that's just, Go Math is what age group? K eight.
We have it K eight, but that adoption was K six originally, and then we added on seven.
Added seven, eight, yeah, okay.
Again, I think there's a great strength in doing this K through twelve altogether. Um, typically in the past, that hasn't been done, more so through the lens of finances, because it is such a like large investment, all in one year. So your two largest um, financial commitments will be both literacy and math when you adopt. You usually don't see a district able to adopt K through twelve at one time because of the commitment that it requires.
I think the conversations, though, and the collaboration that we had K-12 were my favorite part of this whole thing. Um, and we asked for their feedback after every meeting, and they felt the same way. It was nice to hear from colleagues that they don't typically get to talk to or work with. And so it, it truly was a collaborative effort all the way through, and um, I'm really proud of that.
From a student's point of view, what's the biggest thing they're going to notice different?
Question.
I think they're going to notice those, like I said, those um, SEL type things, where it's like we're building a math mindset. Um, there's, they also have a really, they've done a nice job of building in like real-world connections. Like this is how math is used out in the real world, and every unit has kind of a career connection to it, that that's what the unit starts with. So I think kids are going to really like that, I think, well, especially in the high school, math is something we're getting, when am I ever going to use this? So now they'll know, um, and uh, so that's great. And then just the instructional routine, I think, is going to, they're, they would notice that that would be different because there's um, a lot more opportunity for student exploration of the concept. Um, than, than just the teacher standing up front and saying, here's how you do this problem. So a lot more conceptual understanding.
And with the VR headsets, is this integrated with this potential change or that tool separate?
That is, as far as I know, that's separate, um, yeah.
It's separate, but we'll work to um, find those natural connections where it will fit. A lot of times with the VR and the, we use the Prisms curriculum with that, there are lots of opportunities to launch a unit. Um, there might be opportunities at the end of the unit, um, there could be some reteaching. So we'll make sure that we um, integrate Prisms and the headset use within what we're doing.
Okay, so I have another question, were you gonna?
I was just going to say the technology integration question that was um, part of that pie chart was really relative to Canvas and whether or not they integrated well together. And we were pleasantly surprised with how advanced that integration is. I would say that it's probably unlikely you'd find it at that level with other vendors, so. It was good to look into, and we made sure that all of the teachers who were wondering, which were seven through twelve, had that answer before we moved forward.
Okay, sorry, so this, this is, shows I'm still learning. So does the curriculum match the classes that we have at the high school, so they won't have to, you know, okay, so.
Yep, and then the, they're, they do offer, which not, I think they were the only company maybe we looked at, offers an already built compacted class for seven, eight for our compacted math class that we offer at Miller, so that's great.
Yeah.
We don't have to create it.
Any other questions?
All right, I'll be back in two weeks, thank you.
Thank you. You girls ready?
Our school board report for May sixth. Um, on April twenty-fourth, we had our N H S induction ceremony and the recipients were selected based off of the four pillars of N H S, which are scholarship, character, leadership, and service. And if you look closely, you'll see somebody familiar. Um, Marshalltown High School Special Olympics placed second place in the four by one hundred relay at Drake Relays. And then our orchestra, band, and choir this past Saturday, May fourth. Um, they all went to Ankeny Sentinel High. So our N A, M H S um, high school students went to compete. Um, then they were judged based on their performances. Um, we had a couple of solos, duets. Um, and feedback was provided. I heard it was really fun. And then uh, the N H I or the National Hispanic Institute had a taco fundraiser event. Um, this Sunday, this past Sunday, May fifth, at the Saint Henry's Church. And the students in the, at the N H S really worked hard um, this weekend to sell the tacos after the masses and to help raise money for the, their summer N H I program in Texas. So there are Texas L D Z um, youth legislative session. Um, altogether, they were able to raise up to four thousand dollars. So a, a pretty good fundraiser. Um, and they ended up donating eight hundred to the church as kind of like a thank you for allowing them to kind of um, fundraise there. Um, and so overall a profit of about three thousand dollars.
Nice. Very nice.
For sports, we have girls soccer won ten oh against South Tama on Friday. No. Yeah, on Friday. And then boys soccer won against Nevada, 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 two oh. And then the girls tennis team still remains undefeated.
They actually took their first loss Saturday in a close match.
Slide down, so.
But they qualified a doubles team for state today, so.
Very good. That's right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we're bringing back the handbooks that were presented at the last meeting for approval. Jackie, do you have any updates on the high school?
Yeah, um, you will see, I, I think there accidentally might've been a twenty-two handbook, but you will see in the M H S handbook, the updated bell schedule and it shows the calendar. So there was a lot of conversation that you guys were involved in. That was not meant to happen. Um, there's a, there's a big history behind how um, the schedule was changed and the recommendations that came forth. But we did have a um, schedule committee at the high school that had met and um, parents had taken, and students and staff had taken a thought exchange back in um, March of twenty twenty-three. We had done some work behind the scenes to work on this schedule in particular. There's lots of reasons for, for wanting to change the schedule. Had nothing to do with changing the schedule just to change the schedule. We would never do something that didn't make sense. So after taking more feedback from lots of you and thank you for sharing the feedback, absolutely want all that information out there. Um, if you scroll a little further, we came up with a schedule that involves what's called the skinny. So the data that we had received back in March of twenty-three um, was that parents and students, some of them who responded to the survey didn't like block schedule. They wanted their students to have more contact with their teachers during the week. So our teachers said, well, why don't we create a skinny? So there's, that means that all classes from A day and B day are put together on one day and all A periods would meet on that skinny day. And then, of course, we would have still have our block schedule. So if you scroll down further, the teachers then took the professional development calendar and you go a little bit further. It's nice, beautiful, color-coded school calendar. Keep going, Amy. Right there. All right. So they, um, what you see here is that there's consistency. Every Tuesday, for the most part, is an A day as well as Thursday. Every Wednesday, for the most part, is a B day as well as Friday. And then Mondays are skinny days. So what happens in a five-day week is that the student is guaranteed and the teacher is guaranteed to see the student three times in every class. So that's one way of increasing the contact with the teachers. Um, we chose Monday because of the professional development days that occur. And then you'll notice that like on November, right before Thanksgiving, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, rather than have a random A day, we put two skinny days there so that we would be consistent and continue to have an A and a B together and A and a B together. That's always um, the concern for the teachers is when um, you have this extra B day, what am I supposed to do with it? Like another, the kids get extra learning for Bs, but that's okay. So the, the teachers um, looked at the schedule and they had an opportunity to say if they could live with it. There was, there are a few that said they could live with the, the schedule that we currently have. But a lot of them liked this better again because of the consistency and the contact with the students. In addition, just a little side fact that helps out. The students who go out to the college, if they're on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, then this fits right in there. Monday, Wednesday, Friday. If they're on a Tuesday, Thursday, this also fits in there. Tuesday, Thursday. They still have to take two blocks out of their, their schedule, but they always know their classes on Tuesday, Thursday are not guessing. And the students who don't have a, a um, class at M C C, they're also not guessing. Always on Tuesday, it's going to be an A day. So there, there's a lot of advantages, advantages here. Eighty-five percent of the staff took the survey, said that they could live with this schedule.
And so the end of each semester also has two days of skinnies and then two days of semester.
So the students have an opportunity to review with their teachers. Um, when asked by the teachers, if we have a, let's say we have a random snow day on a Wednesday, a B day, what happens the next day when we come back? Well, we'll just flip to a skinny real quick on that day so that the students have contact with the teachers that they missed on Wednesday and still get their A day contact, contact. In the past, we would just skip it. And that was frustrating to the teachers because then we lost that contact time. Um, early morning, it, morning is still part of the schedule. Um, I did a quick look. It's hard to say when I look at the students who requested early morning this year, what percent are athletes? Because that, excuse me, next year, the, the, I don't know a lot about what the ninth graders are going to take whether at the high school. A lot of them were involved and in athletics um, at the, at Miller. I would love for them to continue that at the high school because we know how powerful that can be, especially with their grades and their attendance. But we just don't know. I can tell you that um, early morning classes have declined since twenty twenty. There were about twenty early morning classes that were offered in twenty twenty and this year there were only ten.
Based on your enrollment?
Yeah, the student requests. And if they didn't request it, so what, what I'm doing right now is taking all of the students who've requested an early morning class and assigning them to each of those classes and we'll plop those in first before we push the magic button to schedule all of their other classes around their early morning. And then what happens in the fall or even throughout the summer, there will be students who are like, well, I forgot to put that I wanted to have an early morning class. Well, if there's a seat available in an early morning class, they can still get it. What we don't want to do is to overload those classes like a high school chemistry. There really is only room for twenty-four students for safety reasons when you're dealing with chemicals and things like that. Similarly, um, one of the math teachers was kind of upset because he ended up with a class of thirty-two geometry students. And what was not taken into consideration were the five students that we accommodated from Miller who were in geometry. So twenty-seven were high school students, but then five more were from the middle school. We certainly want to continue to support the middle school students in their advanced curriculum.
So many of the teachers want to continue with block? Is that where we're keeping it or is it something that you just?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a mix on the block. There's certainly the, um, a lot of the application courses really like the block. Um, if you talk to Mr. Niehaus, one of the teachers is not happy about the skinny because he teaches pottery.
Yeah.
So by the time they get out the pottery and they get it all warmed up and everything, they, they don't have as much time and then they have to put it away. So there's a lot of work that occurs with something like that. Same thing with the foods class. In the block schedule, you can plan for it, mix it, cook it, eat it, and clean up. That's really hard to do in forty-five minutes. Um, so there's, there are pros and cons for all of that.
Because block was done because of COVID, right?
We did enter, enter block because of COVID.
Okay. So we just never, we just won't, don't plan to go back to the, what is called now skinnies.
So and now with alignment with Miller, um, I did meet with the Miller administration to talk about, this is just not quite the same as um, what's at Miller. Uh, they're still doing an alternating block. Um, last year we had to drop our plans around the schedule because we were sharing teachers with them. And so we really need to stay exactly aligned. We still have teachers that go over to Miller and support band and choir. They just don't support it in terms of teaching the class themselves. So they don't have to be there on A day and B day. That, that's not a matter for them. They're off during the times that choir is being taught, so they go over regardless if it's an A day or, A day or B day or a skinny. Uh, same thing with band. They go at the end of the day to support um, the band teacher over there with their seventh and eighth grade bands in the afternoons. So we will continue to provide that support there.
Would it make sense to move the skinny to Wednesdays since there's usually no athletics on Wednesdays?
Um, actually there is athletics on Wednesdays. There was this last week. We, we did double check that. You're right, Zach. There were some questions about that as well. Um, so one of the things we can do is uh, there was a concern in it, cross-country, was it cross-country or track? There was something going on with track. Um, but like football's always on Friday, right? Um, I think J V football's always on Monday. So it's really hard to say which one you're gonna pick on um, in terms of where you, where you put that skinny. Um, one of the things we talked about, because the coaches were concerned that maybe the same department would always um, be picked on to provide coverage. So when I looked at their early morning rosters, I also looked at who our coaches were. And so which coaches should be the ones who have the early morning and so that when they're gone, they really don't have a class at two forty. There's no coverage needed. So for example, Duncan Birch um, has really never had an early morning class because he's a newer teacher. Um, so Duncan has football and he has track. Um, and so he's gone most of the time. Um, therefore Duncan probably should have an early morning. Um, so we're also looking at that, that way in terms of athletes as well as coaches. Try and reduce the teacher coverage. Um, so when teachers have to cover, they cover from their plan. And when they go and the teachers that they're covering for expect them to teach. So it's not like they just go in there and say, okay, we're just gonna have a makeup day or get out your homework and do something. They're trying to keep those classes moving forward and using our time wisely. So they do lose out on their time and that, as you can understa- can imagine, becomes stressful for our teaching staff and we all worry about retention. We're really getting in a good spot. We're getting all our spots filled. So we wanna make sure our teachers get a, an opportunity to use their plan the way they need to to create papers and to get things done.
To the point of Zach's question, by board policy, we don't schedule events on Wednesdays past six-thirty from Labor Day to Memorial. Um, however, there are a few occasions where that could happen like this time of year when you run out of dates for makeups between you and the other team and sometimes, but very seldom does that happen.
And you could like golf this all during the day. So that's something that could be on a Wednesday because they're done well before the sun goes down. Girls golf in the spring, boys golf in the fall.
So going back to like that, uh, I think you use reference J V football or varsity football, Mondays and Fridays. You're not gonna alternate days by the week like prior years. You're gonna keep it.
We're gonna, we want to be able to publish this for staff or the parents, excuse me, so that they have it on their refrigerator at home and they can look at it with their student, make sure student knows what day it is. Of course, our, our students are very proficient at using infinite campus on their phones. So that, what tells them what day it is as well.
And really the only deviation will be if we have a snow day or something and.
Some, something special like Thanksgiving happen there. I think in second semester, uh, right before the Easter weekend, um, Friday we have off. And so the Thursday before that is a skinny day rather than leave that A day hanging.
And with the students and staff you met with after redesigning this, I think again, uh, you feel very comfortable. They're okay with it.
Oh, and they walked out of there with lots of smiles. Yes. We invited, um, so I had asked the uh, the committee to come together and we were going to be in the classroom. And so in order to accommodate any staff that wanted to hear the conversation or students who were in early morning, um, their teachers brought them in. And um, we moved to the library. So there was plenty of room for everybody who wanted to hear it. There are some people who opted out, which is fine. Um, but definitely the students had some input. We opened it up for questions and they asked the same thing about Wednesdays as well. Um, but with the minute they heard that early morning was still gonna be in there, lots of smiles.
Well, I appreciate your work on all of this, but I find it to be very confusing. I mean, I'm just honest. I got four kids at home. I've got a job now. I've got lots of sporting activities. So I look at that and I think, are you kidding me? Like, that's a lot to look at. So I'm, you know, it makes me stressed out just looking at it.
Sure. And we do, we um, have annually put out a red-blue calendar that had A B, A B all flipping around and through there too. So it, they, they, they're all both kind of funny. Um, but the, again, the kids, the kids get really used to it.
So why didn't we just do seven periods every day? Just because of the applied sciences?
There's a lot of applied sciences. Think about industrial arts, um, all of those applied sciences as well. Our industrial arts program is growing so much that I actually have three sections hanging. I could use a half teacher. And we're building that beautiful space for all those classes. It's growing. Foods is growing. We will have two, um, I might as well share it and it's not related to the calendar. We will have eighty-three students who have requested taking the nursing class since we've added nursing in back at the high school. Huge. Um, that's uh, four sections each semester, eight sections altogether. And then not students who've requested culinary apprenticeship, that we will use that uh, commercial kitchen and have two sections. Just confirmed that today with M C C that our instructor is eligible to um, teach that second section of culinary apprenticeship. So we have lots of students who will be, be out in businesses, um, learning how to prep food and, and serve food and earning that surf safe certification, earning their C N A certification. And students just met with Unity Point today about a registered apprenticeship after they've earned that um, C N A certification and then get some of their colleges, college classes paid for with that R A through Unity Point at M C C. So I'm excited to say that as I leave the principalship, a little teary-eyed. Um, we've made a lot of progress and we're based learning for students at Marshalltown High School. So I'm excited about that.
Other questions? Thank you, Jackie.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Are there questions about any of the other handbooks? I, I didn't notice there were no changes to any of those from the previous meeting, right?
Um, the only thing I saw in here, Jackie, on the, the school board members, a couple of the terms need to be updated.
Yeah, I think there were some things that were still yellow, quite a few that's still yellow.
Missing, it's page seventeen. Or it's labeled page. Yeah. So at the very top, we have a couple that got reelected. We have a couple that got reelected. So we just need to change those two.
Okay, we will. And we have a lot of yellow that has to be changed in there. So we will, thank you for bringing it to my attention.
I noticed it when I was looking through, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So the expiration dates, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
What?
Oh, just that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, that was my other question. The MVA, MLA handbooks were just presented tonight. Traditionally, we present those one meeting, approve those two weeks later at the next meeting. Um, the high school handbook was presented initially at the April meeting. And then, you know, Jackie had those changes to address tonight with the schedule. Um, so I guess the, the question is, do you want to approve all of them? Do you want to bring the high school MLA, MVA back? I, I, whatever anybody wants to do, I'm just asking for thoughts.
We can vote for it.
I mean, I guess I would say I'm certainly comfortable approving MLA, MVA tonight, um, and not bringing them back again in two weeks. Um, if somebody has a real reservation about those, then I guess we can do it that way.
I'm fine with it. Yeah.
Then is there a motion to approve the preschool, elementary, Lenahan, Miller Middle School, MHS, MLA, MVA and transportation handbooks as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Fault is Hernandez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that included MLA, MVA and the high school?
Yeah, the high school. Get them all. Save us.
Hey, good evening. I am here to present the, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five employee handbook and the appendices. If you recall, we have an appendix for each employee group that details anything that's specific to those folks. And, uh, just to, um, share, all of these have been shared with staff for months now. So we've been, uh, given opportunities for anybody to ask questions, get feedback, have any concerns. And so, um, this is not new content, um, to anybody here. So since you have read every single word of this, um, since you received these, I will be, I will be quick. But feel free, um, to stop me at any point in time if I am moving too quickly. I am just going to go over, um, obviously the changes from prior years. So, um, and I apologize if you get sick by looking at the screen moving so fast. Um, so yellow text is new. Um, I just put a definition when we refer to exempt staff, what that means versus non-exempt. It's, uh, those, those are terms I use a lot and it was, you know, brought to my attention. Not everybody lives in the HR world. So we just put a quick definition of what exempt and non-exempt, um, means. Uh, for the employee assistance program, uh, Randy gave me some new language, um, that is more, uh, it, we changed it a little bit. We still have the, well, we have even better benefits now, but the language was outdated. So here we just updated the language for the EAP for employees. Again, I just want to say for anyone listening, as a reminder, we have even better benefits now. There were some changes made. So great resources there with the EAP. Um, uh, updated to, for level one investigations, um, Jackie Wyant and then the alternate investigator, Dave Glenn. Um, and that is by code. We need to have that in our, um, uh, handbooks. So it is there. I apologize for all the scrolling. Um, and just in an attempt to make the handbook a little bit shorter, I took out the entire, um, board policy on dress code and just gave a quick synopsis and said, see here for more details with a hyperlink that functions. Um, and so people can click on that hyperlink for more information. Um, mechanics in the bus barn have always, um, been required to bring their own tools. It was just never in the handbook. So I added that sentence this year. Uh, per Rex's request. Um, again, it's not a change in practice, but we just put it in there. Uh, change in personnel updating. Um, we put in here non-birthing parental leave. Um, and so, um, in it, to run concurrently with FMLA, uh, we are allowing non-birthing parents to take twenty consecutive days of illness leave. Um, after the, uh, birth of their child, adoption or placement in foster care if desired. So in the past, that wouldn't have been eligible for sick leave because you can only use sick leave if you yourself are ill. Um, or you have an appointment or there, there used to be family. Well, this is allowing the sick leave that bank to be used twenty consecutive days to, um, stay home with a child. We thought that was an important right for the non-birthing parent to have. Again, just took out some hyper, um, this isn't outdated hyperlink, um, change in personnel. This is by code. We follow this, but put it in here, a, a military service leave. This is state code. So we just, we follow it, but we wanted it in there that, um, that there's a military service leave. By law, you get, there's no change, there's no loss of pay for the first thirty days of leave. Um, holidays clarification that you have to be scheduled to work the day the holiday is. So if you're on Monday through Thursday, employee in the holiday falls on Friday and we observe it on Friday, you wouldn't get an extra day of pay. You have to be scheduled to work then. Um, you have to use paid leave the day before and the day after, if you're going to be absent. So if the holiday falls on Friday and you took Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday as unpaid, you wouldn't receive holiday pay. You have to have paid leave or be present the day before and after the holiday. And again, that's our practice, just putting it down on paper. That's, it's no change in anything, just clarifying. Same thing here. Took all the language out that specified that board policy and just put the hyperlink saying, if you would really like to read more, go here. Um, and then, um, put in our, uh, the five dollar fee that we assess for lost or stolen, um, ID cards. Um, here we have three small sections about notific, notifying the HR department of criminal charges and or arrests, traffic violations for only those who use a, a license in their job. So, you know, uh, a para educator would not need to tell us they got pulled over, whereas a bus driver would need to because we need their CDL. Um, and then same thing with reporting child and or dependent adult abuse claims. And that is it for the handbook that's for every employee. Appendix A, and again, I'm just going to keep going. Just stop if you have questions. Appendix A was for food service and there were no changes, so I'm not going to bring it up. Uh, appendix B is for our buildings and grounds employees. And the only change we have here is clarifying again, our practice, putting it in words. Um, we changed it a couple of years ago where buildings and grounds employees now get their vacation on July first. It's for the, the entire upcoming year and just put language in there that states if they separate employment somewhere in the middle of the year, we prorate that vacation. So if you, if you leave halfway through the year, you know, you, your vacation payout is, you're only going to get half the, the, the amount that you worked that year. I don't, that did not make sense. I should just read it. And the event that they use, oh, also in the event that they used more hours. So I was given, I was given twenty days of vacation. And, um, I left halfway through the year. So I should have been able, had a payout of ten days. But let's say I used twelve days, then we're going to, um, all the balance, which would be two days. So you can only, uh, you only leave with what you earned. That's it for buildings and grounds. For, um, the transportation department, a couple of changes that Rex wanted me to make, um, and also through their meet and confer. Um, this is, I'm, I'm sorry, this is the para educators. I apologize for paras. Uh, just, uh, putting it in writing, our, the practice for late starts, early outs, no, no change there in our practice. That was literally it for the paras. Uh, D, this is for transportation. Um, a few changes here. Um, uh, meal reimbursement. We're changing it to eight dollars for breakfast, ten for noon for lunch and fifteen for evening meal. Uh, there, he wanted me to delete the Miller Run text. Also some changes in the days of the week for bidding activity trips. Uh, this is the old salary, uh, schedule change. This, since they are not a, a unionized group, they don't have a separate master contract. They're not a union. So their salary schedule is embedded in their appendix. So this is the new salary schedule, starting at twenty-three dollars an hour, uh, for drivers up from twenty-two forty-six. And that was at the request, uh, like I said, during that meet and confer. And that is a separate agenda item today as well. And then activity rate of pay goes from fifteen to seventeen fifty. And that is it for bus drivers. And bus monitors are also included. All right, here we go. E, appendix E for the certified staff, our teachers. Um, personal leave, it, we've always had, if you're on step twenty-six or twenty-seven, the two highest steps, you get an extra personal day. We are adding step twenty-five to that. So those folks on step twenty-five will also, um, now receive that day. And I realized after the fact that we have an MOU that states that. Moving forward, we won't need that MOU anymore because it's, it's here in the handbook. So we don't necessarily need that MOU, but we will have it in the contract this year.
Be back up and say that again.
Sure. So, um, in our handbook here, I'm adding step twenty-five to this. And in the contract, you'll see here in a, a few agenda items. We have the contract and then we also have a couple of MOUs that are technically, they're not things in the contract, but agreements that we've made. And one of those agreements is, uh, step twenty-six and twenty-seven, get this extra day. And we're also saying step twenty-five. So it's kind of redundant that we have that signed MOU because I'm putting it, it's in the handbook. So we don't actually need that signed agreement, um, because we already have it in the handbook. Um, lesson plan expectations. Um, we want this to be consistent across the district and we wanted it to be in writing so that we could hold folks accountable. Um, some of the feedback that we hear, not only from subs, but also colleagues is frustration when somebody is unexpectedly absent or an anticipated absence and has no lesson plans for that sub or their colleague filling in. And so we met, um, with, I met with the union, met with the principals and we talked about what's a reasonable expectation. And so we came up, um, that, you know, lesson plans should be prepared, should be easily accessible to whomever is filling in. If, um, in the case of a long-term absence, um, they should, so if there's an anticipated leave, I'm leaving, I'm going to be out for three weeks because of my knee surgery or maternity leave, we expect folks to have two weeks of lesson plans prepared. So even if they're going to be out twelve weeks, we're not asking them for a full twelve weeks of plans, but we want a full two weeks so that that sub can get acquainted and, and then take it, take off from there. Um, so that's in writing in here. Uh, we remove, uh, this is just talking about some training. Just go to the AEA website, which it is. We are, the AEA is still going to house our training for now. Um, and so we used to say that you can take the mandatory reporter trainings at DHS or the AEA. We want everybody moving to the AEA for those trainings. It's easier for us to track and pull. And almost done with this one here. Wrapping up, I promise. Uh, for evaluations for teachers, we put that, um, on cycle means it's their year to be evaluated. So they're evaluated every three years. So on cycle means it's your year to be evaluated. Um, we just put a bullet saying that if you change grades or you change content areas, you're immediately on cycle. If, um, unless otherwise directed by their evaluator. So I'm an ELL teacher and I'm switching to Spanish at the high school. You're going to be on evaluation. Um, but I'm a fifth grade science teacher going to a sixth grade science teacher. Kyle said, you know, they don't really need to go on cycle. Um, and so it's really, you're, you're usually going to be placed on cycle unless otherwise directed by their evaluator. So there could be times when you switch, but it's not necessary. But we wanted that in writing. Um, just teach Iowa is no longer a website. So crossing that out. And then we used to have language that talked about the different types of licenses from the BOEE and, um, it just, it just made sense to just say you need to comply with what the BOE says. Instead of specifying, because at times like they, they just changed the master's license and instead of every year updating that language, just saying you need to comply with what the BOE says. And then, um, here we used to have a different allocation for the TSS money. And it used to be seventy percent was indexed, thirty percent of the money was distributed equally. Um, those are these thirty-six and sixty-four, the percentages that we used this year. And then the new sentence of this calculation may change in order to meet minimum salary requirements required by law. Um, and I discussed this with our union leadership and, um, there were no concerns about that. ISEA, ISEA has a little bit different opinion, but, um, following our attorney's advice and also that the fact that our employees, um, did not raise concerns. Uh, and then finally, just again, putting it on, putting it on paper, but our practice has always been for, uh, severe weather and school clothings, school closings. So if there's a, just about leaves and if there's a snow day, what do we do? If there's a late start, what do we do? Again, this has always been our practice, but just putting it in writing.
We stop there. Doctor Shu, his questions for you. For future years, are we going to use the at-home model with some of the kids? I believe that the governor approved like five days. They can learn from home.
We're not really easily, if we know enough ahead of time, we could accommodate that with the elementary students. But our elementary students do not take their devices home pre-K through four. So the time that we did, we knew a couple of days in advance that there was a good likelihood. It's a huge lift for our, for our tech department to do that. But could we do it potentially, but it's probably not likely.
All right, two more secretaries. Uh, appendix F is for secretaries administrative assistance, but then all, it's not, there we go. And then other hourly staff. So that includes some other classifications of hourly folks. Um, and the only change we have in this is, uh, again, the same language about vacation. And if somebody separates mid-year, their payout is prorated. And adoption leave was deleted because that's in the handbook. So this was unnecessary and redundant. Um, uh, there's early release pay. And then if same, like kind of similar thing to the holiday. If you're not scheduled to work on that day, you don't receive that benefit because you weren't going to work that day anyway. Um, this is a twice a year type of thing where they can leave one hour early and be paid for it. Um, but if you're not scheduled to work that day, um, you wouldn't receive that benefit. Um, inclement weather, just text that inclement weather is determined by supervisors and then same with the transportation. This is their old salary schedule. This is the new salary schedule, which was, um, done in their meet and confer. And then just we, I just, again, to simplify things, said other hourly employees is, their pay is commensurate with experience. Instead of having that multiple times. And then finally, the last one is other salaried. So this is a, these are a few people in our, um, our staff who are salaried employees, but don't fit in, they're not a teacher, they're not an admin, they're something else, but they're salaried. And the only change was deleting this permanent vacancies. Uh, this, this doesn't really make sense for this employee group. And then also, uh, we, I did not have language about their vacation and that you, you have to complete ninety days of a probationary period before you can use your vacation. And then also that if you separate mid-year, your vacation is prorated. Um, and then this, uh, this, which is also, um, up for, on the agenda today, it would be moving the school resource specialists to the MEA salary schedule, the base pay. So we took a look at the school and the student resource specialists in the buildings and their, their pay, um, I wouldn't, it wasn't all over the place, but I felt it was a little too subjective when bringing on, um, new folks. So we wanted a way that was really, um, objective and, um, and so we decided, let's put them on the base pay of the salary schedule for teachers. So, uh, their education and years of experience are consistent with, um, that salary schedule. And that rounds out the handbook and appendices for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is not up for approval today. This is just a, a heads up. And then, um, on May twentieth, um, it will be up for approval. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Ryan?
Going back to the buildings and grounds, um, I think about a year ago or two, they changed or as a district we changed. I think you covered the, uh, vacation time if they would leave early. As a district, um, you know, I'm sure these, the employees are definitely buildings ground out, working on our properties, very busy. Probably not reading the, this, this rulebook as good as they should be. But, you know, we had a disgruntled, uh, employee that came to me last year where they retired. They put their time in for those days off for the retirement. And unfortunately, they didn't. And unfortunately, they didn't pay them all out due to this change. What steps were we missing as a district that could have helped that?
Uh, first of all, we did make that employee hole. Um, but the, I, this change was done in collaboration with the union.
Okay.
So I could have done a better job of um letting them know of this change. Um, but also I believe it also falls on their union reps to let them know that this is a change that occurred, but we did, we did make that employee.
But when, when they go, like for example, going forward, if they go in there and they haven't figured this out by now and they say, I want fourteen days off, whatever it is, and they only should have seven. Will the system alert them, hey, you're not gonna get paid for the other seven, or how does that work?
So I mean, if we, usually we only find out someone's leaving the district two weeks in advance typically. Um, and so um, I mean, we, we do our best to, once we get those resignations as lo- as well as Todd Golding and Scott Randall and Buildings and Grounds to try to head this off. Um, but you know, sometimes it, it just works out that they have you, actually, you know what? I don't think we've had anybody this year need to pay us back. I think the word has definitely gotten around that this is a thing now, but if they were, like it says, if they were to overuse it, then they would owe us um back because they used time that they hadn't accrued. Um, but there have been multiple emails and I also met with all of Buildings and Grounds. Was that this fall? Um, for a variety of things and I talked to them about this as well. But originally, I think too, I think I, I failed in more of a mass communication and I think their union also failed to, to also communicate that change to them as well.
Any other questions? These will be back in two weeks for uh approval.
And those wages that were included in those appendices, uh, most of those all except one, which I'll explain later, um, are, are up for approval tonight.
So at the last meeting, I presented the twenty-three, twenty-four current fiscal year certified budget amendment. Um, and asked for a public hearing to originally be set for tonight. Um, with those public hearings, even for an amendment, it needs to meet the same publication requirements as a regular uh budget hearing. I forgot to um email our friends at the Times Republican to publish that notice after the last meeting. Um, it is set to go now and be published this week pending approval of setting the public hearing for May twentieth, so we're just kicking the can down the road, two weeks.
So same budget amendment?
Same budget, not, nothing has changed and this is not a tax increase, this is just for uh transparency purposes, timing of uh functional expenditures mainly related to uh construction projects and spending down the last remaining bit of COVID funds.
Uh, is there a motion to set a public hearing for Monday, May twenty, twenty twenty-four at five P M? And directing the publication of that amendment in compliance with the code?
Still moved.
Second.
Was that you, Leah? Okay, wall Stanley? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
All right, uh, Central A, Central Rivers A A and I'm sure all the other A As as well have reached out to their partner districts and asking them to commit as to what our intentions are for the coming year as it relates to both education services funding and media services funding. And so they had sent out a template which we used to identify our intention um. Early on, um, during the legislative session, Shauna facilitated our other directors that um would be impacted by any changes that happened within the A A. Walked through the litany of, or plethora, I guess I should say, of services that are provided for ed services as well as media services and they prioritized those for me. Um, as one, two or three, meaning highly important, important, but not highly important and not so important. So we're still kind of working through that because a recent survey that they gave us to basically give them that same information was sent out and the survey services by title don't match up with the summary that we were given months ago that we prioritized, so we still need to work through that. But uh, the main thing is that they had hoped or wanted or pleaded um with districts if they would and could to um approve these such resolutions by May fifteenth so that they could know what they could count on or not count on. And particularly, they're wanting to know about the sixty percent funding that's gonna flow to us instead of straight to them for the coming year. Um, I'll be happy to read through the resolution or I can just give you the Cliff Notes version?
Cliff Notes.
Okay, so basically in those two segments and again, uh, for the coming year, it used to be a hundred percent of the funding allocated to the district based on our student population would go to the A A. For this next year, sixty percent will come to the district and forty percent goes to the A A. The A As are currently working on developing a fee-for-pay model for all of the services, even though technically that doesn't come into play for another year when a hundred percent of the funds for ed services and media services come to us. But the reality is, we had to figure out, so for example, with media services, um, we need to know, okay, what amount of the forty percent that comes to you from us, what does that cover? Before we can make educated decisions on how we're gonna handle the sixty percent on a P for, uh, fee for service modality, so what this resolution calls for and we're all in agreement, the ed services piece is, and you heard a little bit about it today with Rogers' presentation, is important to us that we feel confident for this next year that a hundred percent of that sixty percent should go to them and that will give them and us time to figure out moving forward in twenty-five, twenty-six, if that needs to change any. But at this time, we're not comfortable with any of our sixty percent in media services going to them, not that some of that won't, but we're working with the A A, in fact, I think it mailed me today some information that I need to look at. Um, to know a little bit more about what has our usage been of the different things that are offered? And what is the cost associated with that usage before I feel comfortable to make any commitment um of additional funds going there, it's not that we don't appreciate what they've done for us in that arena, we just don't know what we don't know about for sure, what all have we received from media services and what's the cost associated with that. So we're saying that by approving this resolution that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, hundred percent of our sixty percent funds that come to us on behalf of ed services would be directed towards uh Central Rivers A A for the coming year. And at this time, zero percent of the media services would uh flow from us. Uh, and they are fully uh informed and aware of our position on this. So I've talked to Joel Peterson, the executive director, Amy Star, the regional administrator. And Carrie Teske, I think, who is at media services is aware of our position, they're working hard to provide us with more information.
Questions?
How confident are we of the sixty percent? That's gonna go towards education services, you know, with, with the governors? You know? What, what, what she's looking at doing, are they gonna have a staff, enough staff? Well, to, to handle what we're gonna give them? Or our needs?
That's a question that none of us know the answer to for sure, because a lot could happen between now and August, but you know, we'd obviously bring them to the table if that became an issue, but all I can say is special services, absolute must, that we have those services from them and that's not part of this equation right now. Ed services is the next important because that's where we get a lot of building-based school improvement, support and guidance and direction.
Has their staffing changed much at all, have you heard, or is it?
I think they've lost, is it forty people?
Yeah, that's what they send the people.
I think the Des Moines Register published something that showed, um, I don't know, I can't even put a number to it, but
I think there was something, the Times Republican, was it forty, Lena?
Uh, they've lost, uh, the Marshalltown uh location has lost some staff, it's forty.
And that would be media services primarily. Yeah, the Central Rivers Media Services is out of the former Pleasant Hill Building that's in Marshalltown. So that, they serve the whole A A region for me, media services out of that location.
Recently, I spoke with Amy Star and they said they're down over fifty staff members and it continues to grow.
You have to keep in mind that every district can decide whether or not the sixty percent flows through. Um, so if there's districts at Central Rivers A A that decide not to and they're purchasing à la carte, then there's a very different proportion of support that comes to us because we're flowing through the sixty percent that they're requesting, if that makes sense. So it's very difficult to explain, I've put a lot of pressure on there and to continue this partnership with them because I feel that they've been thrown um a really difficult situation and they've been longtime partners with us and they've supported all of our work. They've impacted student achievement at Marshalltown and I think it's hard when you see a number for next year. But I also know that there's a lot of service that's gone into that number before next year. And if they can figure it out and find a balance and how they can meet our needs, then it's worth that sixty percent. And if we need to make changes the next year, then we'll discuss that.
I mean, I think if, if they can provide the staffing, I think that's great, if they can't, then we just need a contingency like.
Well, we, we would have to figure out how to provide the support, but we'd, we'd also come to the table to talk about the financial part of it.
Right, I mean, there's always, I'm hoping there would be an opportunity to be, if we say, okay, yep, we're just gonna let this all flow through and we can't get what we need, can we change that partway through the year, is that just a?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, part of the problem is, the, the whole model for the A is built on that Marsh Town getting a hundred percent back from the money that we in order to provide equitable services around the entire state. The larger schools usually support the smaller schools, having that equitable service, I think that's the part that our legislators don't understand, our governor doesn't understand and a lot of my colleagues don't understand that haven't been superintendents for a long time or whatever, you know, they don't understand that concept. And so that's why this is extraordinarily troubling for the smaller schools in my opinion. And I'm quite honestly surprised that there wasn't more of an effort by the rural legislators as well as the rural superintendents to help people understand what this means for them. But I think unfortunately, all, many of them just saw the dollars associated and just felt like they, they can use those dollars maybe better or more wisely than just flowing them through. And yet, I don't think that they have any idea with a pay for service, particularly if they're not going with the A A, what that's gonna cost. I don't think they realize that there was um price savings in quantity of what was being purchased, so. Um, but I, again, and the unfortunate part of this is, you know, the final decision came so late, even though we from a very early stage were evaluating with the information that we had available. Um, how best to move forward depending on what happened. Um, the, the said service is just critically important and we feel extraordinarily confident as we would in special education that these dollars, we're comfortable with sending the dollars there and if for some reason something isn't right, we're comfortable that we can sit down with them and try to work through that.
Okay.
What, give me an idea, how much, what are the dollars that we're talking?
Media services would be two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Or excuse me, sorry, that was educational services, two hundred and forty thousand, six fifty-nine, that's the on the resolution to be um flowed through to the A A tonight.
Okay.
That's the hundred percent or the sixty percent?
That's the, so.
I was thinking the, the two combined were close to eight hundred thousand, I think it's like three hundred.
That's the full, that's educational funding, sixty percent of A A amount.
Oh.
Okay, that's.
Two, two and four, yeah, that's the sixty percent.
Yeah, but total amount, sixty, forty would be closer to eight hundred thousand.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Then is there a motion to approve the resolution, resolution to allocate funds to Central Rivers Area Education Agency for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented?
So no. Second.
All this wise? All in favor, say aye.
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 Host, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, guys.
Ready, the next several agenda items are in reference to negotiation and meet and confers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I do wanna state that I am deeply sorry, I did not include the secretaries and administrative assistants on this list, so they will be before you on the twentieth. Um, the first item here is with the Marshalltown Education Association, which is our, our certified staff union. Um, we agreed to step and lane advancement and then four hundred and eighty dollars to the base of the salary schedule, that's about five, it is, five eighteen on the supplemental salary schedule, which is a three point zero seven cost increase, which is about nine hundred and eight thousand roughly. Um, we also finessed a little bit, steps thirteen to seventeen. That index for those steps, and I'll show you what that means, it was one point four nine and, and in order to meet the salary requirements, we bumped that up to one point five one. And then as I alluded to earlier, we changed the distribution of the uh teacher salary supplement, that um bucket of money to now evenly distributing sixty-four percent of that across the board and indexing thirty-six. And then several contracts, uh, several language items in the master contract we uh agreed to as well. Uh, we agreed to a three-year contract with wages opening up annually, which has um been the trend that we've done the last several years. So really quickly, um, the, the language changes in the contract. We added language that says if, if those employees who are required to report grades will receive a half day of contract time to work on report cards near the end of each semester. And then those who are required to hold parent-teacher conferences, they will receive a minimum of three hours to prepare for those meetings once in the fall and once in the spring. So that is four times throughout the year where there's, those employees are getting at least three hours um to work on that. We, we had that language, but it was ambiguous and it, you know, it, it's, it spoke to a uh, nine-week reporting period, which we don't have anymore, so this just clarifies and solidifies the language. Um, I just deleted referencing certain years. Um, just basically says, we're, we're gonna let you know the school calendar as soon as it's approved. Didn't see the need to put the dates in there. Um, deleted some language in the employee hours and load. Um, we did add, um, basically, again, kind of condensing this language really to the sentence, to these two sentences. Um, basically, this is saying that they get two contract days a year where they're not required to report and that's basically makeup time for late days for conferences and things like that. That's always been the practice ever, long, predates me quite a bit, um, it's just kind of making it clearer and easier here. Deleted sections four and five. Um, what happens if we're looking at somebody's seniority and they have the same hire date? We agreed that um we would look at the date they signed their first contract with the district and that would be the determining factor. Um, the date they sign that contract and the nice thing about And the nice thing about, you know, going to online records is now we can get it down to the second. And so we can look, literally not just the minute, but the second someone submitted their, uh, contract, so we can be quite precise. Uh, outdated language that references a step four, we haven't had that in years. We agreed that we would take up, um, we would ta, remove that cap. We've said, for several years, we've said we're gonna honor every single year of full-time teaching on the salary schedule when you come to us. Um, that was an M O U that we just agreed to, well, we've decided to make that a permanent shift. So, um, no longer is it just an M O U every year, we're saying, okay, we'll honor all, all years, we're gonna do that indefinitely. So if you come to us with twenty-three years of experience, you're gonna be put on step twenty-four. Language here that speaks to, um, any higher degrees or higher, uh, or credits, um, have to be related to your content area or education in general, like, um, you know, curriculum and instruction or educational administration. Um, so those, to advance on that salary schedule, those have to be related to your, your job that you are doing with us. Uh, copies of the agreement we just said are gonna be online and via email, no longer printed. If you wanna print it, employees can, can print it in their, in their buildings. Um, yeah, that is the contract there. And then the, the sal, the new salary schedules here. And so you can see on those steps, starting, um, steps thirteen through seventeen, this used to be one point four nine, it's now one point five one. So that little change there. But you'll see we meet the minimum requirements now at forty-seven, five, we have forty-seven, five, one, six. And then if someone's coming in with twelve years, they're coming at above sixty thousand. And thank you to Randy for the countless hours of trying to feel, find the most equitable way to do this with the amount of resources we were given. This is just the tentative agreement, everything that we just spoke about and that, that's signed by everybody. And then finally, those last, uh, the M O Us. So this M O U speaks to those who come to us with a, a career in technical education authorization, an initial one. You can get those if you, even if you don't have a bachelor's degree. As long as you meet certain working requirements, you can obtain that and teach in our classrooms. And so we are, we agreed a few years ago that those people would stay on step five of the bachelor's lane. They're gonna stay there though and be frozen until they fulfill the requirements. I think it's six cla, five or six classes they have to take. That's, that's like pedagogy and like teaching related. So until they complete those courses, they're gonna be frozen on step five. It's the exact same language we had a couple of years ago. Um, and then finally, the other one speaks to that steps twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Those folks get an extra personal day, which again, moving forward, we don't really need this because it's in the handbook. But then also, we've always, oh, I can't say always, many, many, many years, we've also had an M O U that says teachers can leave the building safely once kids are away the day before Thanksgiving break and the day before winter break. And that is everything for the, um, M E A.
Questions?
Let me say certified staff, uh, please refresh us who you referred to, they're just teachers?
Uh, it's teachers, counselors, nurses and teachers, counselors, and librarians.
Like, for example, like conferences with the librarians and nurses, do they get compensated for, uh, for, for, uh?
Everybody in this collective bargaining u, unit gets those two days of work.
There.
They're there, they're just not conferencing with parents necessarily.
Good question, I think.
So that, the S R S, back to like earlier, their base pay will be like the step five or not, is that what?
So if an S R S has a bachelor's degree and no equivalent experience, they'd start at B A five, just like, just like our teachers would.
Yep, but they're.
And they're only the base pay, so when we look at that, um, salary schedule, they are by law, they cannot receive T S S funds, that would be illegal of us. So they are getting, they will be paid on that base, base salary, that would be their salary. And I do have to say, um, we, and we'll talk about that in a second, but, um, the feedback was very positive. They were, they were very thrilled. I think the average increase for those folks was four to six thousand a year next year. So over overwhelmingly happy with that change.
Other questions? Then is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five tentative agreement with the Marshall Town Education Association as presented?
Second.
Morales Stanley, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Post, say no? Motion carries seven zero.
So for the administrators, directors, supervisors, also the, uh, proposed increases three point oh seven. In addition to that, we've got some language and or, uh, supplemental financial adjustments that were made based on things that were talked about in meeting and confer. Um, one is that in order for bereavement leave for administrators to mirror the other groups, they added spouses, brothers and sisters, as well as, uh, first cousin and or his or her spouse, employee's brother-in-law or sister-in-law, uh, and the number of days associated with that. Um, also that one additional day would be granted for bereavement in the event that the funeral services, et cetera, were outside of the state. Um, I think we had neglected to update this based on the changes made, where we compacted sick leave and family leave a year. Reckon the old language on family leave and adjusted the sick leave language to reflect what the other groups have. Uh, with the health exams, it used to be upon employment and every five years.
Three, I think.
Yeah, I can read it, but, um, anyway, we've done away with the post, uh, employment physical, so people get physical. And then the only other time I suppose would be if the district requested it for some particular reason. Um, the biggest change probably is within district travel. We've recommended doubling the stipend for, the annual stipend for in district travel. So, uh, principals, associate principals, and the athletic director, we're proposing instead of six hundred dollars, it become twelve hundred. And then for, uh, let's see here, the director of business operations and the director of transportation, it was at a thousand, we're recommending that get booted up to two thousand dollars. And, and the auditory managers part of that group too. And then that we go from twelve hundred dollars to twenty-four hundred dollars for, uh, associate superintendent or director of instruction, director of H R, and student services director. And then, um, the recommendation is that a few of our, um, directors be changed. They were formerly in that second group and we're recommending they shift down, um, to the next group, which would be the director of technology, director of special services, and the direct, director of food service and communications directors. So for them, by shifting groups and pay schedule or stipend, they'd, um, receive four hundred more than they otherwise would if they were in, if they stayed in their current group. I believe that is it.
Did you wanna speak to the P D or summer hours?
The what?
The P D or the summer hours?
Um, you can go ahead and speak to that.
In addition, um, Dr. Shutey and Shawna will be creating guidelines so that certain professional development for administrators that are really heavy in time. So letters training, for example, is roughly over a hundred hours. So like these, these certain trainings that are like very time intensive. Um, there could be opportunities, um, for administrators to receive, um, a financial incentive to complete those just because of how heavy those are time-wise. Um, and then also, um, the secretaries and administrative assistants, really wanted the summer hours back, and so the administrators also requested that. So the summer hours that we had last year were four nines and a four. So everybody is still working forty hours, it's just, uh, four nines and then a four instead of five, eight hours.
Questions?
On that, that, I'm assuming it'd be a Friday, that'd be half a day?
Yes.
Is someone there the other half or is it, Billy closes at noon?
Not when summer school's in session, there will always be someone there.
Does it affect the summer lunches at all for the kids?
Oh, yeah, and so the welcome center is open regular hours and then the front desk receptionist here in the building, um, she will be working regular hours so that this, this building and the welcome center are open the full regular hours.
And this isn't really different than how we operated last year, so it's a continuation of it?
Exact same.
Any other questions? Now is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five administrator meet and confer recommendations as presented?
So moved. Second.
Wise, Faltis, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post, say no? Motion carries seven zero.
All right, the next is our other salaried, I, I mean, there's really no nicer word, wordy we could call them. But again, this is salaried, for example, I T employees, the juvenile court liaison, instruction, so a couple of those positions. Uh, same three point zero seven increase for about a thirty-one thousand dollar, um, uh, cost to the district. And then again, the same summer hours as, the same stipulations as last year.
Questions?
I T employees, they go from building to building, they use our vehicle, how do they get around? Do we reimburse them for mileage?
Yes.
They turn in an hourly sheet.
Yeah, they're not on that mileage section. Other questions?
Nope.
Then is there a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five other salaried employees recommendation as presented?
Move for approval. Second.
Faltis Hernandez, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post, say no? Motion carries seven zero.
And this is the, uh, shift we've been talking about, moving those school and student resource specialists to that M E A base wage on the salary schedule. Um, it, this year, um, it is a cost of about sixty-one thousand for the, for the upcoming year to shift those folks over.
Questions?
Is that a, is a bachelor's degree required for that role?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we have, I believe we have two with masters, we do, we have two with master's degrees.
But not necessarily a social work degree, right?
Um, it is in the area of, um, it may not be exactly in like an M S W, but it's in the social sciences type field.
Any other questions? Then is there a motion to approve the recommendation to move all S R S employees to the M E A salary schedule beginning in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented?
Move for approval. Second.
Faltis Wise, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post, say no? Motion carries seven zero. You're on a roll.
I know, here we go. The nurse, uh, the lead nurse stipend is Stacy To Crawford, she serves as our lead nurse and she reserve, uh, she receives an extra stipend for extra hours and extra days. She works in the summer and it has been at forty-seven, fifty for several, several years. And so we'd like to increase that to an even five thousand.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the increase in the lead nurse stipend for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented?
Move for approval.
We'll go with, uh, Hernandez Morales. All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Post, say no? Motion carries seven zero.
All right, uh, back to a negotiated group, I'm sorry, never mind, not there yet. Transportation, uh, another meet and confer group, they're not part of a collective bargaining, uh, unit. And so increasing the driver pay by fifty-four cents on each step, which is about a three point six five cost, twenty-six and a half thousand roughly. And then, um, for the monitors, fifty cents on each step. So they will advance, um, steps and then receive, um, this, this change to their salary schedule. Uh, for the monitors, it's a three point eight six, uh, cost increase for about eight thousand dollars. And then the other change, which was in that handbook appendix, um, was increasing that activity pay from fifteen an hour to seventeen fifty an hour.
I just have a question on this one.
Yeah.
Um, most of the rest of these are three oh seven. What was the reason for the difference on this one?
Um, two things, one, we always take a look at our surrounding districts and what they're doing as far as pay. And it's, it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison because some of their routes are shorter. And so, you know, when we're looking at our three-hour, our hour and a half routes and they're looking at a shorter route, you can't just, you know, compare the hourly pay. But it was assessment of surrounding districts, um, uh, need. And then also, just as you can see, to impact every single employee in this group, which is, which was a much lower, um, cost. So a few, few factors.
Okay.
Other questions? Then is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five transportation meet and confer recommendation as presented?
So moved. Second.
Faltis Morales, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Post, say no? Motion carries seven zero.
All right, Buildings and Grounds, they are a collective bargaining unit. Um, but this year, the only thing up for negotiations was the salaries of four of our employees. Um, they're con, considered in the skilled trades, so that was three mechanics and one carpenter. Um, and so for those four individuals, a three point zero seven percent increase, which is about a six thousand dollar, um, cost. And then we always take a look at the Iowa workforce data and look at their salary ranges. And I don't, that's not on here, that's just the tentative agreement I'm talking about. Um, but we always look at for those skilled trades, so that's plumber, H VAC, carpenter, um, electrician. Um, we want that salary range to be commensurate with Iowa workforce data for our region. And all of our, our ranges were a hundred percent on, except the plumber. Um, they increased that starting from seventeen seventy-three to seventeen ninety-one. So it's a three point oh seven percent increase for those four individuals. And then if we're ever able to hire a plumber, I'm bumping up that eighteen cents, um, to be, like I said, commensurate with Iowa workforce data.
Questions?
So I'm hearing from you, we do not have a plumber?
We have not had a plumber for a few years, or nor a, nor an electrician, H VAC.
I feel like we're living in nineteen nineties, you cannot get a plumber for seventeen ninety-one.
Well, it, and again, it's, it depends on their licensing and years of experience. So if a plumber comes to us with, and I, honestly, I can't speak to the different levels of licensing, but if they come to us with a certain level of license, um, with years and years of experience, they're not gonna be making that, they're gonna be making it the higher end of the range.
Okay.
So this is like the low, like a city, the lowest level of a license and no experience, that's the starting wage. But we're going to evaluate their education, licensing and experience always.
What do we need to do to get one of those trades? Even it sounds like we pay on their experience, so that must not be good enough, what do we need to do differently?
Um, I don't know, um, we've had a lot of conversations with Dr. Shutey and, um, Todd and I about, um, the difficulties in finding some of these trades. Um, we've advertised at M C C a lot, um, we've gone to, uh, career fairs specifically targeting skilled trades. Um, and we unfortunately are just not successful and I have never once heard, well, we, we, there was one potential candidate who did not come to us because of the pay and the cost of our insurance. But I've never heard any of, anybody else that we've spoken to say the reason they're not coming here is the pay.
Is other districts around us the same issue, they're hiring and outsourcing, what are they doing?
We contract out a lot of that work.
Is other districts doing the same thing we're doing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's pretty common.
Yeah, um, especially the districts around us, that they don't have the budgetary ability to fully staff. It's typically their Buildings and Grounds Director, that's also their electrician, their plumber, their H VAC specialist. It's typically their buildings and grounds director, that's also their electrician, their plumber, their HVAC specialist, and if they're not specialized to do that, then they. Contract out.
Other questions? Then is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five? Operation maintenance and full-time transportation personnel tentative agreement as presented?
So moved.
Stanley Faltis? All in favor, say aye. Post, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Alright, the other hourly employees, so this is the hourly IT folks, my staff, business office staff, those who are hourly. A three point zero seven cost, or I'm sorry, three point oh seven increase to their wages, which is a cost of about thirty-three and a half thousand. And then again, for those who work twelve months a year, the summer hours, same stipulations as last year. And again, I will be bringing back the secretaries and administrative assistants on the twentieth, I apologize, I didn't get those on.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five other hourly staff? Recommendation as presented?
Second.
Faltis Stanley? Was it not you? I got it, okay. Thought I was doing pretty good tonight. All in favor, say aye. Post, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Alright, the final one, we have three full-time substitutes returning to us next year, and we propose increasing their pay by five dollars a day. None of them have a Iowa teaching license, they're on substitute authorization, so it's moving them from a hundred and fifty dollars a day. To a hundred and fifty-five dollars a day. But new folks coming to the district, we'll keep that a hundred and fifty for new folks coming in, but our existing folks we wanted, who are returning, we wanted to. To have them see an increase as well, and so that's a three thousand five hundred dollar cost for those folks.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve? The proposal as presented?
So moved.
Maria.
Was it Maria? Wise Morales, all in favor, say aye. Post, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone opposed to me powering through the policies?
My goodness, no.
Alright, so we'll start with the first readings that were recommended for amendment. None of these had any changes from when you last saw them two weeks ago. So four point oh five. Point oh two, four oh five point oh two licensed employee qualifications recruitment selection. For eleven point oh two classified employee qualifications recruitment selection. Seven oh four point oh one, local, state, federal miscellaneous revenue. Seven oh four point oh six fundraising within the district. Seven oh four point oh six R one fundraising within the, oh, I'm sorry, that's an adopt, forget that one. Seven, seven oh six point oh two payroll deductions, seven oh six point oh three reduction employee pay. Seven oh six point oh three R one reduction employee pay regulation. Seven oh seven point oh one presentation and publication of financial information. Seven oh seven point oh four. Audit. Spelled incorrectly. And seventy-one point oh two student. Council on. School transportation. That seems like that. Student conduct on the school transportation. So. All of these recommendations for amendment, I recommend that the board approve and waive the second reading.
Yeah, I don't, it should be student conduct, but the policy itself actually is titled student council on school transportation.
We'll fix both of these.
Questions about any of those? Then is there a motion to amend? Four oh five two, four eleven two, seven oh four one, seven oh four six. Seven oh six two, seven oh six three. Oh six three R one, seven oh seven oh one. Seven oh seven oh four, seven eleven oh two, and waive the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Wise Wall, all in favor, say aye. Post, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
There's one new regulation that was recommended for adoption. Seven oh four point oh six R one fundraising within the district regulation. I would recommend the board adopt that new regulation and waive the second reading.
Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt seven oh four oh six R one and waive the second reading?
So moved. Second.
Faltis Morales, all in favor, say aye. Post, say no. Motion carries seven zero. And then we need to delete.
Yeah, we have three policies that are recommended for deletion. Five oh four point oh five student fundraising, five oh four point oh five R one student fundraising regulation. And seven oh seven point oh two treasures annual report.
And seven oh seven oh three.
Correct, four.
Yep, there's four to delete.
So we would recommend the board delete those four and waive the second reading.
And those are all now redundant, right? Any questions? Is there a motion to delete five oh four oh five, five oh four oh five R one? Seven oh seven oh two and seven oh seven oh three?
So moved.
Stanley Hernandez, all in favor, say aye. Post, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
The beautiful thing about the initial review policies for this week is that they were carefully reviewed. By the transportation director as well as the director of technology. And there are no recommended changes, so these can all be marked as a review. Seven eleven point six transportation on school groups, seven eleven point seven school bus. Seven eleven point eight transportation in inclement weather, seven eleven point nine district vehicle idling. Seven eleven point ten school bus passenger restraint, seven twelve technology and data security. And seven twelve R one security requirements of third-party vendors regulation. So none of those would need to come back.
Any questions about those? Then they will be marked as reviewed.
I have a quick question. Three oh three oh four is on here for first initial review, or that was presented earlier in the meeting with the admin meeting confer. Marking that as review or adopting?
Well, there were changes to it, right?
Were changes, so move to bring back.
Probably need to come back for a first reading. To amend.
That's the admin one.
Hey, reminders. We've got a meeting in two weeks. Hopefully. Little shorter agenda than tonight. But no promises. Stuck it out. Daisy, it would be nice if since you and Natalie will be graduating, I assume. If you guys could, as part of your report at the next meeting, give us just a little bit about what you two are going to be doing next year. Okay, thank you.
And for Gisele, I believe the applications are open, but all you have to do is email and say I'm on. We'll let you bypass.
Two plaques. Reminders, we're coming to the end of the school year, so there's, we're winding down committed meetings and those sorts of things. Committee reports, the auditorium foundation committee met last week. A brief, brief report.
Yeah, probably the biggest thing, and this has been hanging out there for a couple of years, is that we finally got. Competitive bids, I guess, or quotes, I guess quotes to move forward on. The burlap backing on the back wall of, and. You know, when you first walk in where the lower and the upper, there's bird lap covering, which has looked wavy or warped. For a long, long time, and so it's hard to find places that do that kind of work, that was part of the challenge. But we found a couple in Des Moines through an architect DLR that we worked with on the auditorium and. Got a reasonable bid, although it was significantly higher than what the. Auditorium Foundation had committed a couple of years ago, so they recommitted on that. That should be happening in the summer along with re-carpeting of the. Upper walkways, I think. Trying to think if there's anything else. Though that would, in my mind, that was kind of the most significant thing, there is a desire also. To kind of retool what is the ticket booth area that is never used for a ticket booth area. You know, a more open. Type space, and so I think the facilities group will probably be looking at that and trying to figure out how. It is a project that. Should be able to do for us. I've got a reminder, tomorrow's a big day for us, we have Mark. He will be presenting for ninety minutes to high school sophomores and juniors in the morning, you're more than welcome to attend that if that's the time that. Would work best for you to pop in and hear him a little bit, that's from nine to ten thirty, I think. Or nine thirty to eleven. And then he'll be also speaking to the noon rotary club out at the college from noon to one. And then in the evening, we particularly target our local business and industry partners. He'll be speaking for ninety minutes, he's a generational expert as well as workforce development expert. So a lot of what he talks about is. Number one, engaged kids. The world of work. And the skilled trades and things such as that, but then also. How we as employers have to look differently at these younger generations in order to better. Meet and or accommodate their needs and desires as they're looking for employment as well, so. He did a keynote for our staff and community virtually back, and I think it was twenty-one when the pandemic hit. He was originally supposed to come here, and then we had to pivot into virtual, he was probably. One of the most highly regarded from our staff keynotes that we've had. That might be different now after the most recent PLC summit that we had, but. The staff really reson, what he had to say really resonated with our teachers, so. Nine to ten thirty.
At the auditorium.
The evening from six to seven thirty is at the Black Box. Also, you would have seen a calendar invite for a special work session. The day of our next meeting, but at noon, and that is where Rob Schwartz from RSP. Will be here to present our most recent enrollment analysis, he was already booked in the evening by another school district and. The next best time we could get him here in person was going to be like in June, and I know that our. Envision architects and Boyd Jones are itching to get a whole that information I've shared with them that. I won't share it until it's been presented to the board first. So we'll probably, hopefully we can live stream that particular work session, Amy. Hopefully we can live stream that one because there would be interest on a few of those folks probably. Coming in from the outside to watch, and then hopefully we can record it as well. Hopefully we can record it too.
Is that lunch provider, should we bring lunch? Lunch provider, or should we bring?
Lunch will be provided, and I've invited our full administrative, all administrative team to attend too, so we'll probably have a. A big audience, I would guess.
Okay, what have we done this evening to improve or enhance education for students in Marshalltown?
Through the math curriculum?
That was really exciting just to see the. I like the K through twelve similar. Look, feel, not having to transition so many times.
I liked hearing about the virtual academy. Cause I didn't, I mean, I think it's something great that we offer, and I didn't know other kids. Students in different communities came to it, so that's exciting, I think that speaks volumes.
Proved all those contracts for. Next year.
Nora's itching to get them out.
Mount and get them signed.
Motion to adjourn, who's the one?
Second.
Faltis Morales, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.